Pause that here.
All right, we'll call it to order, this Livingston City Commission meeting on August 15th at 5:42 PM.
Vice Chair Kale.
Here.
Commissioner Friedman.
Right here.
No.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yeah.
And the chair is excused. And so you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, well, we're going to start this evening out with public comment. This is public comment that's not on the agenda tonight. Individuals are reminded that public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. We do limit public comment to four minutes and that'll be the same throughout the entire meeting this evening. If you have a comment that's for something that's not on the agenda this evening, please come on up. We'll ask you to sign in at the podium. All right, seeing, oh, here we go. Come on up.
I was wondering, has the city filed a loss of property? There used to be five microphones on this table, on the table, but they disappeared. Have you talked to the police department about the theft? Garrett, where did you sell them?
We, public, so sir, I'm, I'm just going to remind you that public comment is not a back and forth.
Well, no, okay, I'm just, I'm just being quiet. And then, since your, your counterpart to the county, we're talking about the, whether they can make budget deficits on there. I think one of the things you could do, you're a part, you show your muscle, is stop funding the Park County Health Ops. We have a Park County Health Officer last year in April 19th. The FDA sent on Twitter, you can send it on clean scale, said, don't take ivermectin, ivermectin is for horses. Now, the FDA, the lawyers for the FDA said that now doctors are allowed to prescribe ivermectin and hydrochloride. So this, this health, public health officer is a fraud. And what's worse is we have a cartel in Livingston. Other, we have the pharmacies and the drugs and the, and the doctors. And they are joining hands and they're denying people medicine that could help them. Of course, you wouldn't be part of the cartel on there. I just, one thing, in 1864, Montana basically became a territory. And before we were a city, we had a town council. And I just, I'm looking at how we are sort of looking at the, how the town council at the den and how the commission acts now. I really think that, well, I think this town council, city council basically represented the city, the, the people of the city. On there, I, I, I am really, really disheartened as far as the actions that you took to endorse closing off Main Street in September for a union of two men. I don't think that's the, I don't think that's a purview of the city commission. You've got other fish to fry. And then let's, and then let's talk about our recycling program. Pennant Teller have a program called BS on there. And they showed the, this is basically a ripoff. If we want to have recycled cardboard, why don't you hit the fire department to basically burn the cardboard? Because we were paid, we, this Mel and Quentin, who was paid, voted to increase the, when we were paying for set board, for us recycling a thousand dollars a ton because he's, the, the previous vendor said, well, you'll get all your money back when the cardboard rebounds. You, we're at the bottom now, you're going to be compensated. And if it worked for Paige Fetterman, the former finance director of the city, she told me point blank, this recycling is just a, it's a, we're being scammed as taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Any more public comment for items not on the agenda?
Sorry, I was just talking about this meeting, is this where contention for the amphitheater?
It is, and that'll be on the agenda later, and you can comment on it then.
Okay.
Perfect. Anyone else in the room, comments for items not on the agenda? Okay, looks like I do have one online. Patricia, do you want to come off mute, state your name and address, give your comment?
Yes, Patricia Grabo, 204 East Calendar Street. I'm not sure if this is considered on the agenda or not, but the Warren McGee statue that's, that is coming up, I just want to make two comments, if I may, about it. One is the sketch that is, that you see is not the final sketch. The final sketch will have a child who is in clothing of the period with a wagon. And the significance of it was that Warren McGee, when he was four years old, escaped his house and came down by the depot center and saw his first train and fell in love with trains. So the child looking over Warren's shoulder in the, in the statue is going to be worn at four years old. I just wanted to say that the final sketch is not the one that you see, and it's quite amazingly lovely. And I want to say this is a result of six years of a dream come true for Mary Michael, who did our secretary statue and myself. We've worked for six years for this, and I cannot thank the depot center and the Park County Community Foundation and the city and the Downtown Building Owner and Business Association with the cooperation that has finally led to this beautiful bronze of Warren McGee that will, will, will be able to see within months from now. It is really a milestone for those, the local people here in Livingston, Montana. So thank you. I just, I just have such a moment of gratitude for such, the kind of cooperation that created this statue. But I think you'll be thrilled with Mary Michael's final design on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and M R L, who happened to pay for the money for it, six hundred and sixty some thousand dollars. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more call out for comments on items that are not on the agenda, online or in the room. Being none, we'll go ahead and close public comments. So we'll move on to consent items, gentlemen. We've got consent items A through G this evening. Anyone like anything pulled? And if not, then I'm.
If I may, actually, while I couldn't agree with Patricia Moore on the last, on her comments about that Livingston, the statue of Warren McGee at the depot being a long time coming. The, the depot foundation reached out to me earlier today and actually asked if we'd not act on that item. They have one or two organizational issues that have popped up in the last few days that they, they wanted to just clarify. So if it's okay with the commission, I'll bring that one back to you in September. So a motion would be, you know, all items except the.
And we'll punt D to.
September 5th, I believe.
September 5th, okay. All right, well, I will entertain a motion.
Make motion to approve certain items, A, B, C, E, F, and G.
Second.
Motion by Schwartz and a second.
Second.
Second by Lyons, he got you. Uh huh. And roll call.
Vice Chair Kale.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion, pass it. All right. We have no proclamations this evening. We do have a scheduled public comment for the downtown master plan consultant presentation. Mr. Gager.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Kale. It's my pleasure to welcome the team from Crescendo Planning. They are, just got into town and are getting ready to kick off the downtown master plan and contract you folks approved, special meeting on July 7th, I believe. And so I will, I will step out of the way and allow the experts to discuss the downtown master plan and what the, the community should expect over the, the coming several months.
Thanks, and thanks to the commission for, for having us. We didn't want to take too much of your time, but just wanted to kind of give a high level introduction to our team, talk a little bit about the project's scope and schedule, and then in the interest of giving you something to start to think about, tease a little bit of some of the early survey results that we've gotten from the community over the last month or so. So with that, and I guess you flip to the next slide. I'm Andy Rutz, I'm with Crescendo Planning Design, as Grant mentioned. Couldn't be more excited to be working on this project. So thank you sincerely for, from our team to the city to let us lead this project. I founded this, the company Crescendo Planning Design last fall, honestly, working projects exactly like this, small town projects with a real focus on implementation. And I'm really excited to have Matt on the team and EPS, and then I'll mention Robert Petchin Associates in the next one.
Yeah, I'm Matt Crosser, I'm a principal with Economic Planning Systems, we're a land use economics firm that is supporting Andy on this effort, working on a number of projects over the years. We'll be looking at things related to economic developments, housing demand and feasibility, and then we'll get into that in a minute.
And then we're also joined by Robert Petchin Associates. They're going to be focused primarily on transportation and kind of ability pieces of the plan. They've got a long history doing downtown plans, order studies and the like, all across the state of Montana, and have been pretty frequent collaborators with Matt and I in the past. So to talk a little bit about the scope of the project, I think one of the things we're most excited about is engaging the community. As Grant mentioned, we're, we're spending today, tomorrow, and part of Thursday, trying to meet with as many stakeholders as we can, drop by local businesses, get the word out on this visioning survey. And as you all know, the engagement part is the most important part of a process like this. So we're really going to try and be intentional about providing a variety of touchpoints, in person, online, meet people where they are, try and leverage a lot of community events that Livingston already has in place. So we're not asking the folks to come to us as much as possible. Next slide. In terms of the scope of the project itself, at a high level, really, what the master plan is intended to do is provide the city with a lot of direction and recommendations around things like land use, mobility, parks and public spaces in and around the downtown. More specifically, we'll be diving into a streetscape improvements plan. A piece of that will be helping to create some locations for wayfinding and trying to connect residents and businesses to some of the amenities that already exist in downtown and maybe some of the ones that are envisioned in the future.
Yeah, and then a couple of the elements, the master plan that my firm will be leading, related to economic development, looking at the market conditions within downtown and opportunities for different uses of businesses and how it seems like U R A and the Business Improvement District can help support some of the opportunities that we identify. We're also going to be working on a housing study for downtown, looking at the supply and demand, potential for housing in the downtown area, and what potential opportunities for new projects or renovation of existing buildings for housing, what the feasibility of that is, and what are some strategies to try to make that a reality? And there'll also be some work going into parking, understanding the demand for parking and how that compares to your existing supply and how to manage and potentially expand that supply over time. And then all of that work will kind of fold into an implementation action plan, as Andy mentioned. The goal is for this to be very implementation focused and giving you a short term and long term strategies that you all and the community can implement over time.
That's great, yeah. So just to give everybody a sense of the project's schedule, as, as Grant mentioned, we're kind of kicking things off in earnest. Now, we've been doing some existing conditions analysis and data crunching, reviewing past planning documents kind of in the background. The project will last roughly from now until, till May, as you see on the screen. Some of the big outreach windows, as I mentioned, you know, we're here for these three days. I will be at the farmer's market tomorrow evening, if anybody watching or anybody in attendance wants to come and sit and chat with me for a while. We're doing a lot of site documentation where we're here right now. We're going to be doing some intercept interviews, as I mentioned, meeting with some stakeholders. And then we're targeting another big window in probably mid-November where we'll have a really hands-on community workshop, we'll be doing a breakfast with local business owners, having a strategy workshop with U R A folks to talk about redevelopment opportunities, and then we'll kind of present all those findings in a quick turnaround at a public open house. And then in late January, the idea would be to convene a series of focus groups that are really intended to try to build coalitions to help push towards implementation going forward. So as much as this is a planning process, it's also about building, you know, advocacy groups going forward to say, like, these are the priorities in our town, and here's what we can do to help push this forward as residents and community members. So to give you a quick sense of what we've heard so far, on the, the next couple of slides here, you can probably skip to the next one. We, we kind of soft launched a vision survey about a month ago, and I say soft launch because we just kind of, we put a bunch of signage out around 4th of July holiday, just to kind of start to socialize the fact that this project was going to be kicking off. We were fortunate that Grant got in the newsletter for us, there was a newspaper article about it where we saw some peaks and responses. And then we're really hoping to continue to spread the word this week and throughout the rest of the month. The shameless plug on the corner of the side there is that QR code. If you haven't taken the survey yet and you want to pull out your phone and scan it, it takes about two minutes, I promise. It's applicable to both residents in town, residents in the broader county, and then visitors as well. Because we want to get a sense of how visitors use and experience the downtown. And what we're looking at in this survey is kind of frequency of visits, why folks come into downtown, what are some of their favorite parts of downtown Livingston? What is a vision in one word? And you'll see there's varying degrees of compliance with the one word asked. And maybe what are some rooms for improvement? And as of last night, we were up to 263 folks who participated, I think, an hour or two ago, we were up to like 280. So the next few slides will just give you a sneak peek at some of the early takeaways. So of those 263 from last night, you can see about 78% are Livingston residents. So far, 15% are residents in surrounding communities within the county, and then 7% were visitors to the downtown. One of the first things we asked is specific to residents of Livingston and the county, how, like, how often do you spend time in downtown? And you can see about 90% of those that responded are either at a daily or weekly visitation of downtown, which really speaks to the vibrancy of the place. We asked those same folks, you know, what are the things that bring you down here most often? And you can see dining, shopping, and events are kind of the three most predominant responses. The work in downtown folks is, you know, there's about 30% of those, which the takeaway for us is that we got to get the word out more to folks who are working in downtown, and that's what we're trying to pavement this week, at least those numbers. And then visitors, you know, we asked them the same, how often do you spend time in downtown? It seems like most folks are in that a few times per year with about, you know, 40% total in the, like, monthly or once per year. And then on the vision side of things, actually, a simple one, we had asked, you can go back to that.
That's nice, sorry.
We had asked those visitors, you know, what are, what are your reasons for coming to town? And you can see special events and dining, which I suspect the special event peak was probably because of the timing of the survey a little bit, and folks coming in town for summer events. We asked residents, and we also asked visitors, in one word, what's your favorite part of downtown Livingston? This shows the resident responses, but I would say the, the visitor ones are pretty similar. A lot of focus on, you know, the history of downtown Livingston, the architecture, the communities and people itself, which really kind of parallels some of the takeaways from the growth policy and, and really kind of a focus on that, that core community place. We asked all folks if they could improve one thing about your experience, what would be, if this wasn't a list, this is open-ended. And so we got a really wide variety of responses. But I would say the consistent themes are here on the screen. Parking has been a pretty consistent one, both for residents and visitors. Similarly, a greater variety and diversity of shops in the downtown. Safety has been a pretty strong emphasis, and of those results, most of them focus on pedestrian or cyclist safety and a desire for a greater emphasis on it. Folks looking for more trees and green space, which is probably really reflective of the hot summer days. And then more affordability, and that, that has been in the comments at least, both applicable to housing and dining. And then, you know, the, the types of comments that we love to get is consultances, downtown's perfect, don't screw it up. So we will do our best. And then finally, we asked folks in one word, and this is where I had mentioned, you know, varying degrees of compliance here, what would be your vision for the future downtown Livingston? So really what we want to get the community to focus on is helping us to understand the challenges and the opportunities they see. But then, really importantly, where do you want to see Livingston for the next 20 years, 25 years? And you can see that a lot of these responses parallel some of their favorite parts of Livingston. So, you know, that's, that's encouraging, that it really emphasizes a focus on retaining that sense of community and that sense of history and vibrancy. And that's certainly something we think we can help the, the city create path forward to.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, good luck. Forward to the consultant. It's what everybody has to say, especially parking.
It's always a popular game.
Thank you.
I'm curious, so when does the survey close? Do you have a close date for that?
So we're, we're intending to keep it open, probably at least to the end of this month. We're going to, like I said, we're going to try to really make a push this week to, we've got stack of flyers, we're going to be passing out our codes. And I'm going to try and get everybody who attends the farmer's market tomorrow to take it.
Yeah, well, lots of folks have been to the farmer's market, I'm sure a lot of us will see you down there tomorrow. Thank you so much for being here and getting out to all of us in the community and looking forward to seeing the results. Great, well, I'm going to move along. And so next on the agenda is a public hearing, consideration of community development block grant projects for 2023. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kale. The item before you is a, just a little bit of a process step here as the city moves later in the year to consider some applications to the community development block grant program administered by the Montana State Department of Commerce. Their, their recommended best practices for us as a city and prospective applicant to hold a public hearing and, and solicit any, any ideas from the community on, on projects that, that may be suitable for a community development block grant application. And, you know, as I, I noted in the, the staff report, the goal of the community development block grant program is to, to help cities and counties develop and preserve affordable housing, provide services to the most vulnerable in our communities, and create and retain jobs. And within the community development block grant program, there are both planning grants and construction grants. And so we do welcome ideas from the community at, at either this public hearing or in, in about a month from now, on September 19th, we will conduct a second public hearing. So if you don't have a good idea tonight, please take the opportunity to, to spend the time over the next month and, and let us know if you think there's a project in, in that, those areas that, that may be suitable. But if, you know, if you folks have any questions, I'm happy to stand for those. Otherwise, the, the recommended practice is for us to conduct a public hearing.
Okay, so I'm going to just start with a process question. So we move this along properly. You're not looking for a motion, for a motion from us this evening, correct? We're going to open this up, listen to what folks have to say, they have ideas about how to do a CBD grant. We'll close the public hearing. We'll start with clarifying questions from the commission, I'll open it to public hearing, close it. And then if we have any other further comments or questions, we'll move in that direction, does that sound good? Okay. So let's start then with, from the commission, any clarifying questions for Mr. Gager?
What kind of money are we looking at, or is it project specific?
So there are different thresholds for both the planning and the, the construction grants. And if I'm not mistaken, the planning grant limit is $50,000 in reimbursement, and then the construction is, is, is quite a bit higher, several million is, is the threshold there, yeah, it's, they're meaningful projects.
Thanks for.
Anyone else?
Same question as Commissioner Schwartz. I guess, so the purpose of the, the public hearing is to solicit ideas for these grant applications that.
That is correct.
Beyond just the, the general guidance of preserving affordable houses, services for the most vulnerable.
And then I'll just ask, Mr. Gager, one a year, correctly, one, we're allowed to submit for one planning grant a year and one construction grant a year within the.
One, one planning grant per cycle and one construction grant per cycle. And typically, in the state of Montana, there's been two cycles each year.
Okay.
And in fact, the, the downtown master plan was funded from a, a previous cycle.
Any other questions from the commission? All right, well, I will open up this public hearing on consideration of community block grant projects. If you would like to come up and talk to us about an idea, we'd love for you to do that. We'll start in the room first, just come on up to the podium, name and address. Money in the room? All right, I don't see anybody in the room, so we'll go online. And so Danielle, I see your hand up, do you want to come off mute? Name and address and, and give us your comment.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Danielle Maiden, I'm the Cooperative Housing Director at Neighbor Works Montana. My address is 202 Fox Hill Drive, Kalispell, Montana, 59901. Neighbor Works Montana is a statewide affordable housing organization. I work directly with residents who live in manufactured housing communities or trailer parks to buy their communities and run them as cooperatives. We've worked with two such manufactured housing communities in the city of Livingston, or in Livingston, I should say. View Vista community is 333 apartment units and 50 manufactured housing units. And right now, that's located in Park County, but surrounded by the city of Livingston. And then we recently worked with the residents of Frontier Court out near the Green Acres neighborhood, and they have 28 units and are now resident owned and called Sleeping Giant Community. As far as needs go in those communities, for a planning grant, Sleeping Giant Community is part of the Green Acres expansion with the sewer line. And the hookups have been put in all along the easement and the property line, but they do need to become connected. And will need to have a preliminary engineering report completed in order to apply for any construction funds for that project. So I am asking for the city's support in that in a planning grant to support a PER for that project. And then for View Vista Community, they have a failing water and sewer system, including a failing lift station on the property. And we would like to apply for CDBG funding of $750,000 towards that project. And that would help replace all of the water and sewer lines within the community. They're already connected to the city's system. But as I said, they have pretty significant leaks taking place throughout the community, both in their sewer and water lines and a failing lift station. So that would support the replacement of all of that system.
All right. Thank you, Danielle. Any other public comments? Patricia, go ahead and come off mute, name and address, please.
Is it Danielle Maiden is the woman who previously spoke? Oh, I'm not off mute. Am I off mute?
You're off mute now. Go ahead and give your comment, Patricia.
Patricia Graybo, 204 East Calendar Street. I couldn't endorse more the statements of Danielle Maiden and the neighborhood, Neighbor Works, Montana. This is, this is, I've been involved in in CDBG since 2002. And this is actually the best use of CD CDBG money I have seen to date. So I I just endorse the use of creating trailer parks in which manufactured homes can exist outside the downtown area. I I'm a great advocate of housing outside the downtown, particularly we've a workforce, housing outside the downtown area. And the area that was referred to as the Green Acres sort of opening up the water and sewer lines there is especially conducive to to development at this point, certainly if we ever get our wellness center moving forward. But I I just endorse so much of what she has had to say. That is, to me, the the most viable, absolutely economically intelligent use of CDBG money I've ever seen. So thank you very much. I I just simply endorse what Danielle also talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Any other further, any further public comment? I'm looking online. I don't see any online. I'll come back to the room one more time. Anyone in the room? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and and close this public hearing. I'd rather clap my hands. Gentlemen, any deliberation, follow up comments, questions?
I guess one one question and then I'll pull up with a comment. First question is, are we going to do any kind of outreach to solicit more input outside of the public hearing?
So the, yes, the meeting was noticed in the the recommended way and then we will put this out through both the newsletter and and some of our other channels as well.
Great. And I'll just say that I think that what we heard from Neighbor Works sounds like a great idea. I think that the manufacturing home communities in Livingston are a great asset in terms of affordable housing. And, you know, ensuring their integrity is an important way to make sure that they they continue offering that that service to our community. So those sound like great ideas that I think are worth
The words ran on my mouth. Good. Yeah, I'm interested in seeing more of a giveaway. Yeah, definitely what neighbor words has come up with. Absolutely. Like that gets funded.
Open for me, sir?
Yeah.
And I I'm really thankful for Neighbor Works and the work that they've done in the city. They're also doing work in the county. And so to think about our community in its entirety, Neighbor Works has also been able to help some some mobile home parks in the county become resident owners as well. It would really be nice to see Sleeping Giant get some help. I know they were annexed recently and certainly before they were annexed, I believe they've been on boil water alerts previously. So to see that get changed would be lovely. But yes, please, Mr. Gager, I think you heard from all of us, additional outreach would be lovely.
Absolutely.
All right, I'm gonna move this along if there's nothing else there. All right, we're gonna move into our first resolution this evening. Resolution 1598 approving and adopting the final FY 2024 budget. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cale. The item before you is the final step to at least adopt the budget. We do have a few implementing steps following this. But the the budget is unchanged from our our last conversation. And just to be clear, the recommended budget that was put forth in May, we have added $15,000 for election administration for a possible in-person election related to a possible special district creation. And then we added 20,000 for a a consultant for the Energy Action Plan. Those were two commission requests that have been implemented. And so you know, I feel like we've we've spent a bit of time, but I'm happy to stand for any questions you may have on on the budget and and what to expect. Thank you.
Any questions on the budget? Okay. So do I have a motion before we move to public comment?
I moved to President 5098.
All right, we have a motion by Lions and a second by Schwartz. Let's go ahead and open this up to public comments. Does anyone have a public comment on approval of the FY 2024 budget? You can come on up. We'll start in the room. Come on up to the podium. Going once, going twice in the room? I don't see anybody in the room. What about online? Anyone online want to make comments on the FY 2024 budget? I've seen none. We will close public comments. Gentlemen, any deliberation, comments?
I'll just thank the city manager and the finance director for their efforts on this and through the process that appreciated the first meeting prior to seeing it in a commission meeting and it's legible and straightforward. I think that it's another example of daylighting. Some, some of the operations. Very, very much appreciated.
Mr. Schwartz?
I agree with Tori.
Same with you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gager, for a really page as well for all your work on the budget this year and walking us through it. I really appreciate it. Sorry, Seth, that initial meeting. And then the presentation of the budget, which I have in my backpack back here, was really wonderful and easy to understand. So thank you very much. All right, we have a motion on the table. How about roll call?
Vice Chair Cale.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
Motion passes. We are moving on to Resolution 5099, fixing the tax levy for FY 2023, 2024. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cale. With the adoption of the budget, this motion or movement before you is to fix the tax levy for the coming fiscal year. And our finance director, Paige Federhoff, has provided some analysis in the staff reports and due to a a number of factors, including the the state's revaluation, the 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 total number of of Mills Levy by the city of Livingston will decrease in fiscal '24 and and due to the the revaluation and also the new construction that has come onto the tax rolls. We also see that the the tax impact on various residences or size of residence, value of residence is is decreased in fiscal '24 relative to fiscal '23. So I am, I'm pleased to present this one to you and both the finance director and I stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions? I have no questions. All right. Motion? Motion by Schwartz. All right, let's go ahead and open it up to public comment. So any public comment on the fixing of the tax levy for 2023, 2024? Come on up to the podium. In the room? Right, I don't see anybody in the room. Anyone online? Any public comment for this resolution? None? We'll go ahead and close public comments. Mission discussion.
I would just. Pretty straightforward.
I would say that it is probably surprising to folks to see that their their taxes in the city may go down this year. Because of the way the mills are.
And you know, to to be honest, it actually, the the value of new construction being what it was and also the statutory limitation that we can only the city can only increase our revenue from property taxes by half of the rate of inflation. A lot of, a lot of factors came into play. But I am, I am pleased to submit the budget and and lower, give everybody a little bit of tax relief in the coming year.
In one section of our taxes, anyway, right?
I only control one section.
From only our side, yeah. Okay.
Vice Chair Cale.
For.
Commissioner Friedman. Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Motion passes. Right. All right, so moving on to Resolution 5100, increasing all rates for all customers of the city of Livingston's water system. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cale. This item is back for you to finalize the recommended increase in water rates and as a reminder to you and summary to folks in the audience, the city is the staff is recommending moving to a a tiered water rate system. And so the recommendation is that the the first 10,000 gallons consumed, the the rate increases by 3%. And then from 10,000 to 30,000 gallons increases by by 5% and then from 30 to 70 by 1,000 gallons billed per month by 7%. And then for those gallons above 70,000 consumed each month, the recommended increase is is 10%. And so a as we discussed in our last meeting, approximately 84% of of users will fall into that first tier that has a 3% increase. And and the the impact for those users will will range from about 50 cents a month to $2.50 a month and and increased water rates. And and this increase largely is as a result of of cost increases, including to electricity that that pumps the water and then also chemicals that that treats the water. And then we also, of course, have to fund our our capital construction projects. So the the staff has worked, I think, to 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 really minimize the impact on on ratepayers this year. And and we're excited to introduce tiered water rates to the city of Livingston. So again, the finance director, Paige Federhoff, and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Yeah, commissioners, any questions? Mr. Lyons?
Will you remind us what the the average residential consumption is? And it and these these gallons, that's a monthly basis, is that right?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, that is. Well, the average residential use, we know that that 84% of users use in that first tier in the 10,000, and that generally is where the residential uses fall there. Exactly.
Any other questions? Right, have a motion or we open it to public comment? Okay, we have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. This has been posted as a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the comments as a public hearing. So I'm now opening this public or this public hearing. 5011, if anyone has public comment in the room, please come on up to the podium. Name and address and give us your comments.
Lyndon Moore, 113 South Moon Street in Livingston. And I'm not super well informed on everything going on. So I just, my question may be not super great, but anyway. Um, there is a move to annex a lot of properties just outside the city limits and they will have to pay a lot of money to get onto city sewer and water. How much is that? Like helping out to reduce these costs for the rest of us? And it's some of some of those people have, like literally had to sell their house and leave town because they can't afford to put put the sewer price in. I'm hearing tens of thousands of dollars. So it almost sometimes sounds like, great, you're saving us money over here and it's costing a whole bunch over here. And so I just would like to hear some addressing of that. Maybe I'm seeing it incorrectly or incompletely. But I certainly don't want to try to save me a few bucks and have people have to leave Livingston who've lived here for a long time. That's what's occurring to me. And so I just have, you know, that is a question.
Great. We'll go through public comments and then I'll, we can ask the city manager some of the questions that have been brought up, okay? Any other further public comment in the room? All right, we'll ask for public comment online. Any public comment for Resolution 5100 online? Patricia, go ahead, come off mute, name and address, please.
Patricia Graybo, 204 East Calendar Street. This is the first time in 25 years that I have actually endorsed increasing water and sewer rates in Livingston. Owning a business downtown, it has always been such a hardship for us to bear these these increases. Owning a business downtown, um, it has always been such a hardship for us to bear these these increases. However, the way it's written is creates a much more equitable situation for the people of Livingston. And this is really quite innovative. Because I mean, this first time in 25 years, I've seen this kind of innovation going into the increase in water and sewer rate. So, um, you know, it's a question of biting the bullet and and dealing with this increase in order to have the kind of equity that we're beginning to see occur for our community. So I I want to commend the city manager and the finance officer and the city commissioners on their foresight in in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Any other further public comment? I'm looking online.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll let you address that. Um, okay, any other further public comments online or in the room? Okay, this public hearing for Resolution five one zero zero is now closed. If you all let me start, I'll go ahead and ask some of the questions that we received. Mr. Gager, you heard the question too. Do I need to reiterate?
No, no, I I think if I if I heard the the questions correctly, it was really kind of a two part question there. And so the the first part, you know, the the question of whether adding more users to the system is is beneficial to existing users. And, you know, I I would offer that in a a system like this, really almost any business, there are fixed costs and variable costs associated with operating the business. And so to the extent that that we are able to add more customers without increasing the fixed costs of the system, then then yes, it does bring the the monthly cost of operating the system, you know, per household down a bit. And so I I think that is, you know, one thing that we're benefiting benefiting from here in the City of Livingston. However, you did make note recently of, it sounded like the Green Acres area and the recent annexation there, which, you know, certainly is is a bit of a unique situation. The the Green Acres subdivision, when it was approved in in the late 50s, actually was given access to the city's water system. But they they were not required to also hook up to the city's wastewater system at that time. And so the that created a number of a number of issues. But probably perhaps most importantly, we had a number of septic systems that were very, very close to the the Yellowstone River. And and due to the age of those systems, it it made sense for the city to take the steps to to bring those users on to the wastewater system. We were very fortunate a- as a city to have about half of those construction costs picked up by a federal grant, an ARPA grant that was was recently awarded to us. And so while we initially expected that that the average homeowner or property would incur approximately 15,000 in costs to hook up to the system because of of some engineering changes, low bids and the combination of the federal dollars. It's my understanding that the 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 average cost of a hookup was was down around $5,500 per household, which, you know, relative to the cost of replacing a septic tank is is reasonable. I certainly recognize that 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 is an expense of of significant amount for homeowners. And and I think we're all aware of that. And so for that reason, actually, the 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 commission did waive some connection fees and other fees associated with with hooking it up to the to the wastewater system for those users. So, yes, it it is always unfortunate to to be hit with large one time costs. But the the Green Acres situation was very unique in that the decision in the 1950s was to allow them to hook to water but not wastewater, so.
Am I allowed to ask for the question or is it closed?
In general, no, but I'll let you ask one question.
Okay. Some of the information that I'm hearing, some people that live on Arbor Drive, and I don't think that's the Green Acres subdivision. I think it's a separate, their properties are larger. I don't know if that is a different governing than what you're talking about for the acres. And and that's one of the stories, they're costing a lot more than what you're talking about here so far.
If I may, you know, I I actually, the area you're referencing, I believe, actually is outside of city limits. And I was approached by a community member several weeks ago who who mentioned something similar to what you're talking about. And, you know, I I did ask that person for more information because it it actually, it doesn't match up with with my understanding. And so I'm I'm waiting to hear back from that person. But, you know, certainly, if if you have any thoughts there, I don't have a business card on me. But if you just call City Hall, I'm happy to talk in in more detail with you.
Thank you, Mr. Gager. Yes.
So I I heard, or maybe I misheard, but I thought I heard kind of a reference to a general ambition of the city to expect, expand the annexation to cover costs. And that is in no way a policy of the city or an ambition of this commission to expand the city limits. That those recent annexations were specific to to kind of the criteria that Mr. Gager was talking about. And there's no way, like, a general set policy in the commission that we want to expand the boundaries of.
And we are in deliberation and discussion. Yes.
No, sorry, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Or no. Green Acres, but situation. They were going to be forced to do something with their substances.
Commissioner Freeman. And I will just kind of play off of what Commissioner Lyons said as well. I think that there is some disinformation on the streets right now that the city is really looking to annex and grow. And sitting here with these folks at this table, I think, as Commissioner Lyons said, and I wouldn't, we're going to take the most of us, but agree that that's not this commission's priority. There's other priorities in the city that we're interested in working on and annexing out into the county is not one of them. So if folks feel like they're hearing that, you've heard it from the commissioner table. It's not something, that's not one of our top priorities. We have priorities and you can look and see what Mr. Gager had put out earlier this year about our priorities in the city and and his administration and what we want to work towards. And annexation into the county is not on the list, so. I'll put that up there. All right, anything further? Yes?
Just getting back to the the water, it's very grave hours point, but I think that the increasing the rates by a lesser amount to the the typical household and more as the tiers go up is a is an equitable solution. And it's also, it also, I think, is by design intended to conserve. And, you know, we with our with our infrastructure, we have really two options. We can conserve or we can expand. The former of which be much cheaper than the latter. And so trying to incentivize some conservation before having to raise rates by much more in order to facilitate expansion, I think, is wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. And I agree, we'll hardly believe that. Uh, anything further, Donovan? Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Kale.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
Motion passes. All right, moving on to Resolution five one zero one, increasing all rates for all customers of the City of Livingston's wastewater system.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kale. The item before you, as we work through some of these resolutions to implement the budget, is to increase the wastewater rates. And staff is recommending a a flat increase of five percent to all users of the the wastewater system. And we expect, as a result of this, the average residential user's bill will increase approximately a dollar and and one cent. And and some users may see increases of of up to $5.01 per month on their bill. And so, again, in our last meeting, we discussed this or two meetings ago, we discussed this a little bit at length. And really, we have a situation where the the sewer fund really is short on resources. And and we've canceled recent capital projects as a result of a lack of resources and and also bits that were above our estimates. So I will stand with Director Paige Federhoff for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any clarifying question? All right, I am going to open this as a public hearing as well. Oh, thank you. Moving along. All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'm going to approve Resolution number five one zero one, authorize the chair and city manager to sign the resolution.
Motion by Lyons in a second, by Schwartz. Now, we'll move on to public comments, and I'm going to open public comments as a public hearing, as it was posted as such. This public hearing is now open for Resolution five one zero one. Any public comments for this resolution in the room? Seeing none, we'll go online. Any public comment for Resolution five one zero one online? Raise your hands or feel free to come off mute. I see none. All right. We're going to close the public hearing for Resolution five one zero one. Commission discussion.
Was in line with the the water. Sorry to say, but I have especially
Mr. Freeman. Right. I think we've seen this a couple times, so let's go ahead and just move forward.
Vice Chair Kale.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
Motion carries.
Almost there.
Here we go. All right, uh, Resolution five one zero two, intent to specify the assessment option for street maintenance and improvement district number one for FY twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kale. The item before you is to, as the title said, fix the the street maintenance assessment for the year. And I am pleased to announce or remind you folks and and remind also the folks in the room that the city is not seeking to increase the street maintenance assessment for fiscal twenty four. And so as with property taxes, due to, due to, in this case, really just the growth of the the roles, the tax role, the the assessment that will be received by each household is expected to decrease. And and as we noted here, that the residential property, we we expect their assessment to to decrease from approximately $275 last year to $255 this year. So it is a small improvement and small assistance to to property owners in the city. So again, both Director Federhoff and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioner, any clarifying questions, Mr. Gager? Being none, do you have a motion?
I will move to approve Resolution five one zero two and authorize the chair to the chairs to sign.
By Lyons, second by Schwartz. All right, let's go ahead and open this up to public comment. Any folks in the room? I will comment for anybody in the room. Come on to the podium. All right, I don't see anyone in the room. We'll go online. Any public comment for Resolution five one zero two? Folks online, raise your hands, feel free to come off mute, say something. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Commissioners, deliberation discussion? Anything else? Seems straightforward to me as well. These are, all of these rates are things that we look at every year, so. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Kale.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
Motion passes. Moving on, Resolution five one zero three, intent to estimate the cost of maintaining lights and supplying electrical current to special improvement district number twenty for FY twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kale. This item is similar to the last. This is for the street light and light district. And so for this year, the budget contemplated a a reduction in the assessment amount relative to last year. And and we are decreasing that that assessment by thirty three percent. And so as a result of that, and also the increased property tax rolls, the, again, the average residential and commercial customer will see a decrease in their light assessments for the coming year. And we estimate that that the residential property, average residential property will move from $31.09 for the year to $19.30 for the year. So again, a a small measure of relief for property owners in the City of Livingston. I'll stand for, any questions with Director Federhoff one more time?
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Move it every year. All right, then I would stand for a motion.
I'll make motion, approve Resolution five one zero three.
Second.
I have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Freeman. We'll go ahead and open it up to public comments. Any public comment for Resolution five one zero three? Start in the room. Come on up to the podium. Okay.
I guess I should at least give you an ad of way and out girls.
Thanks, Linda. All right, anybody online? Okay, I see. Patricia, go ahead.
I I I find this one of the most remarkable meetings I think I've ever seen. With decrease, especially in lighting, I just commend this city manager and city commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comments. Discussion, deliberation, Commissioners, anything?
Thought that's been brewing in my mind, which is you know, where I was speaking to a friend, a fellow transportation planning expert who lives in New Orleans in a declining city. And we were kind of comparing the woes of a growing city to and there are lots of of pains associated with being in a in a growing city. But there are also some benefits and And this kind of situation is really just, you know, as much credit as we'd like to take as a city manager and city commissioner, this is, this is a function really of the fact that the city is growing. And so there's more tax revenue coming in. But as we've seen, there there are good sides of that on some of the things we voted on. And there's some tough sides of that of some of the things we voted on. So as much credit as I'd like to take, it's really on this one, just a function of the the changing economics of the financial system. So just gonna show that.
Roll call please.
Vice Chair Kale.
For?
Commissioner Freeman.
For?
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or?
Commissioner Lyons.
Or?
Motion passes. Moving on, Resolution 5104. Intent to modify special improvement light district number 20 by replacing streetlights and other. I want to help me pronounce that. Apportensis. Apportensis for FY 2023-2024. Mr. Hager.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kale. We saved the hard one for the end here. So this one is is similar to the last. Happy to report that there is a decrease, again, of thirty-three percent for for the coming year. And so we we do expect that the average residential property, just as with the last one, will move from $31.09 down to $19.30 in the year. And so again, another small measure of tax relief that, as Commissioner Lyons is astutely pointed out, is as much due to any financial wizardry up here as it is just growth in the tax rolls, as I said, so.
I think this one, you should just get all the
Well, and Paige, Paige is good, yeah. So anyway, for the last time, I'll say, Director Federhoff and I will stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any question? The only thing that I would say is I, because these two page I wrote on here are page 192 and 198 the same. Because as I read them, I was like, was this a typo? But apparently not, so thank you. I was, they were very, very similar. Nope, if we have no further questions, I would ask for motion.
I move to approve Resolution 5104 and authorize the chair to sign this resolution.
Second.
Motion by Lyons. Second by Schwartz. One more time, we'll open it up to public comments. Anyone in the room, feel free to come up to the podium, make public comment on Resolution 5104. Seeing none, we'll go to the room, or excuse me, we'll go online. Anyone online like to make a public comment on Resolution 5104? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Commissioners, any further discussion?
Time for mine. But I think this one can be attributed entirely to the finance director.
Okay. Roll call please.
Vice Chair Kale.
For?
Commissioner Freeman.
Or?
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or?
Commissioner Lyons.
Or?
Motion passes. All right, so I'm going to look to my fellow commissioners here for a moment. We're about to move on to something that I think will take a little bit of time. It's quarter till seven. We usually take a break at seven. Shall we take our break now and then we can devote ourselves to the topic? Can I have a motion for a motion for a break from Schwartz and a second by Lyons, all in favor? Bye. Okay, we'll take, we'll be back in 10 minutes, folks, so we can give you our full and divided attention. So we'll see you in 10 minutes. All right. I'm going to go ahead and call us back to order. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. We'll go ahead and move forward. Our next agenda item. Our next agenda item, we're moving on to action items. So action item A is consideration of special exemption permit for property located at 5576 US Route 89. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kale. The item before you is a special exception permit and very similar to one we we dealt with several months ago. And I will invite the the Planning Director Jen Severson up here to walk you through, folks, through the the specifics of the project and then also a bit of a reminder of of kind of the process and and why we're here under the Livingston Municipal Code. So Jen, I will turn it over to you as I start the screen share.
Couple things to clarify real quickly. Because I'm done, it's done, and where you saw the million in there. Just left that out with amphitheater. Use a couple of my favorite sentences from the book. Potted in, but we're talking about amphitheater at KPRK property. Also, I just want to draw your attention to the public letters of support that I received. I also received an email as well, a email from around 5:10 this afternoon from an additional person voicing their support. So that's 12 total, I think. One was in your, with your staff reporters in attachment. The rest came in in the last couple days. So, yeah, this is a special exception push. A special exception for review for that's okay, I just want to make sure it's showing.
We, the folks online are not seeing it.
Not seen anything at all.
Just for your first, your first slide.
Absolutely, I will fix that.
Let's give him a second. Sorry, I'm not able to tell that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate. Doesn't always work as well. You know, I'll just leave it in this and I'll just go that way.
Okay, but now you're not on your screen.
Of course, the old, sorry, folks. It should.
Folks online are just getting situated in online and in the room.
Yep. And so this is, just to give you some background for the project, this is the location map. And you should know that KPRK property is at the eastern end of town, just where you on south side of 89th South. And the, go back real quick, sorry. So the KPRK property is in red, and we're talking about the parking, the property adjacent to it immediately to the west, owned by Montana Railway. That is that property, just so you can maybe have a and so this is a site plan that shows the proposed amphitheater that's going to be to the south of the existing radio station. It is between the radio station and the reverse out of this frame, but also to the south. And then, again, this shows the parking layout for the MRL property next door. You can also see the multi-use path is in there. And that yellow dash line, I put that in there to show where the floodway and regulatory floodplain boundaries are. And so that you can see that the proposed artwork for the amphitheater will not encroach into the floodway. And so this is just amphitheater. The top is an elevation drawing view, and then bottom is just an example of what we're talking about here. You can see it's, you know, it shows in profile that KPRK building. And I'll get into that in a second, but that is not part of this review. The radio station use in this zone is a by right use, so it does not require a review to be allowed. Part of this project that is under the purview of this special exception review for the permit is the amphitheater. But you can see kind of where it will be located. The structure is going to be elevated. And then the amphitheater, I want to say it's like six and a half, maybe seven feet max at its tallest point. And so I would say that it's either actually, you see on the bottom as an example, it's probably even taller than this movie as far as had its tallest point at the rear of the amphitheater. So just to summarize, the zoning district for this property is neighborhood commercial. It is in a design overlay district, however, it's not really relevant to this review because the design overlay guidelines are specifically for buildings. Since the KPRK building not only is not under the purview of this review, but it is being restored with its exact exterior to maintain its historic relevance and its place in the National Register. So we're not considering that for the use here for the zoning. Um, again, the amphitheater will be for now the event venue, those events and programming that will support the restored radio station use. Right now, there is, I think, there's broadcasting from the the tower in the back that is, I think it looks to their their programming opossum. I don't even know if it's there anymore because the applicant, Mr. Feinstein has actually, oh, sorry, Feinstein has actually purchased the property. So I'm not sure how that works right now, as far as if there's anything being broadcast from outside, but there's been nothing from the inside. Next move that capacity for the amphitheater is those 250 people. And that season is similar to what we saw at the Shane Center, May of September, so the warmer weather months, it's about 20 weeks a year. Frequency of events, he's proposing to have no more than two to three events per week. And then event in time, he is proposing no later than 11 p.m. Parking for this amphitheater is a hundred vehicular stations on the adjacent MRL property. And he is working with MRL for a lease agreement for that property that would allow him to lease the property to park on, if you know, it's a vacant property right now. And then also he's proposing to install 10 bicycle parking spaces on the KPRK property next door. And just for the uses, again, that's table 3040 in our code says amphitheaters are allowed in the neighborhood commercials on the district by special exception permit, which is why this is in front of you. Key points again, radio stations not included in this review. The minimum parking requirements are met. No concerns were expressed from fire and rescue, public works, police, building. As a blood plane administrator, I have no concerns because of what's going to be required. We did receive, like I said, 12 total public comments, all in favor of this proposal, all supporting it. And again, just the the reasoning behind the amphitheater, I think there's been some discussion is to support the radio station. You know, if just the radio station may not be economically viable in the free applicant, so to have this amphitheater that allows them to have programmings and events that support the station, but also like Ted Talks, poets, authors, just kind of low key stuff. Again, the maximum attendance proposed is 250. It'll be live performances, and I think he's also proposing to have video broadcasts from those live events, so if you're not there in person. I guess some of them are all of them will be able to see, he can probably answer questions about that. And so just to go over really quickly, the review criteria, what is being worked out as part of the special exception permit review and your buffet of possible actions. For the review criteria, the use will not place a substantial adverse effect upon nearby properties or their occupants. That the proposed use is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. If desired, the commission may add such requirements as it deems necessary to protect the surrounding neighborhood from the effects of the granted special exception. So there are four possible actions from your consideration. Deny the the application for a special exception. Grant the application for a special exception. Delay action on the application for a period not to exceed 30 days, or you may grant the application with special considerations and safeguards. So here are some concerns. Again, I wanted to kind of take to heart what you had discussed at a previous one, a similar review. And also mitigation that the applicant is proposing to address these types of concerns. So for noise, you know, the the, any kind of noise from having an outdoor soundified event. You know, you realize there's concerns, but there's a couple of things going for this, but I think we'll we'll mitigate that. There's the ambient background noise of the the railroad, the highway. Yes, but I think the railroad and highway, you know, are those background noises that are there. We'll cover up a lot of this, the design of the amphitheater itself. So with the grass surfacing, there are no permanent hardscape improvements that are part of this amphitheater, proposed as part of the amphitheater. So, you know, that grass absorbing sound. Also, the fact that the the stage, if you will, at a performance area is going to be facing towards the road and the radio station and the railroad. So any amplified sound is going to be going that way to the north. There are a couple nearby residences, and one is 490 feet from the property, and another is maybe 500 feet, 800 feet. And so with all of that in mind, I would anticipate that because of the design, because of the ambient noise, that that will lessen the impacts of, like, some applications of those two neighbors. Traffic, their traffic engineer looked at this, and there is not an exact match for a use in the Institute of Transportation Engineer's Trip Generation Manual. But they came close, I think it's the live theaters what they used. I feel like it's a similar use. 190 trips for 250 people. We'd anticipate about 190 trips would be generated by an event of 250 people in the amphitheater. And that is 95 in, 95 out, so 95 arriving, so you're really looking at 95 cars. Those trips would be split between when people arrive, usually within an hour when an event starts, and when they leave, usually within an hour of the event. That represents about a 2.8% increase in the, it's actually not the ADT, it's the annualized average daily traffic, I think, which is sort of spread out over your actual, if I'm not mistaken, the way NDT does it, is their actual counts over a certain period and then sort of estimate it for the rest of the year. I mean, you take out the outliers, of course, when big rigs are crowded in town, because interstate closes. And so it's not a large percentage increase over what's already there. And there actually is a camp station that's very close to KPRK. It gets just to the east, if I'm not mistaken. So I feel like it's a pretty good indicator. Also, there is that adjacent multi-use path that runs from the street, what is the street, Art's copy zone?
Old Street, right?
Old Street? So from there, on Park Street anyway, runs from there and then across the bridge. So obviously past this, also past the parking area. And the applicant proposes to promote walking and biking to get to any of those events to to not have to drive and park. As far as parking, there's 106 vehicular spaces, 100 are proposed on that adjacent MRL property. Maybe there's six that would be fit on the KPRK property itself. So whenever they're having just radio station time, the six parking spaces should cover that. And then there are also, again, the 10 bike parking spaces that covers the minimum bike parking required. I, Seth is recommending a condition of approval to require bike corrals at larger, that's, and so that, you know, 10 bike parking spaces is great, but if maybe they see that there are a lot of cyclists coming, then they're going to want then they're going to want to provide some additional parking and the bike corrals are good because they're not necessarily permanent fixture, they can set them up and then take them down. As far as floodplain, yes, the amphitheater is in the regulatory floodplain, that's the hundred year floodplain. A floodplain development permit is going to be required. As part of that, there, there would not be allowed to breed or have any constructions aging or be cooling in the floodway. Again, my recommended conditions of approval, I'm also saying that pre-construction, that that flood, floodway boundary is marked off so that there's no questions to the contractor, you ignore where it is. And I did verbally, just I met with Tracy Sears at DNRC, who is the floodplain administrator a couple of weeks ago and mentioned this project and gave them, gave her outline of this and she did not anticipate any, any concerns as long as the floodplain permit was there, was issued and, and they provided the information we needed for that. So I am, staff is recommending that the commission approve the special exception permit with a couple of these conditions we've discussed and also the rest that are proposed in your staff report.
Commissioners, clarifying questions from Mr. Gager and the Seers.
So you mentioned that the, the parking requirements were met. And I'm, my recollection from the past was that there's been discussions with the neighboring property, but no actual agreements are in place with the neighboring property, is that correct?
That is correct. The MRL property?
Yeah.
That is correct. And if I may, one of the conditions of approval is, addresses that. Because I think that we can only agree that, but having large events there without that extra parking is, is going to be a nightmare and poses a lot of risks, safety risks along that road. So one of the conditions that I am recommending is prior to commencement of that amphitheater use, they have to provide us with a copy of a sign list agreement with MRL for the use of that property for event parking. And we look through it, make sure it's there, make sure that, that everything lines up with what they have proposed and shown and discussed.
Great, thank you. And that is written out already?
No, they are, my understanding is they're, they're working on that with MRL.
But I mean, that's in our
That is, yes, that is one of
Two oh eight, number A.
Okay. If you like it the way you do, you do not have to come in, but I know
Good.
Commissioner Schwartz, any further questions?
Thank you.
Commissioner Friedman, any questions for the city manager or city planner?
No question. I have a couple. Backrooms, I see them in, I, I see that they mentioned them and that they're going on this prop, this leased property as well. Can we make, can we add to this letter A to add the bathrooms, the bathrooms in there? I mean, in, in nowhere does it say like they have to have bathrooms in them. Event planner perspective and having been to lots of places or I've seen lots of people paying in the river. I'd like to make sure that there's that, that they, they have the proper amount of bathrooms.
Absolutely. And, and I actually may draw your attention to, can you pull up the site plan?
I, I see, I saw it on the site plan, but I know it's on the leased property. So I just want to sort of make sure bathrooms are going to happen. They are in the, they're in like the site plan for the leased property.
So i- if I may, Vice Chair Cale, to, to address your, your question. Jen, excuse me, Director Severson, as she does, has included condition F, which recommends that the applicant be subject to the terms, conditions, and their commitments of record for the special exception permit. And so the, if there's something I'm misspeaking, please jump on in here.
Correct, but I just realized that's the wrong site and it's not, that is correct. I did not swap that out.
So a, a, as, as I was saying, on, on page 214 is, is where the, the portable toilets are referenced and because that is a commitment that they have made as, as part of the application.
Yeah.
The applicant will be done by that, by some condition now.
Offsite because I asked them about that. So it, I, I said, I didn't see anything in the lease application about having toilets. It just says parking. So I believe they moved it into our sewer, into the sewer easement and our public works director did not have permission with that. And there's five of them, I believe. So I'm sorry, it is the right one. I didn't update my hard copy packet. That is correct, what you're saying right there.
Yep. And I see them on here too. So as long as this is how they, if we're covered under, this is what they said, we're bound over that. That was my bigger question, just to make sure that you're, if that's. My other question is I feel like that property, for some reason, is the property that I have heard over and over and over again, that there's environmental issues, people are afraid of that property. So my bigger concern is move, earth moving in that area. I want to make sure that if this happens, the right things are triggered and that, that's left out.
So I, I can offer from the city's recent project experience with the Katy Benel Park at North M Street that is, is affected by similar historical environmental issues. The issue before you folks tonight is a, is a matter of land use subsequent to this administratively will be a, an issue of, of a building permit and the construction process. And so through our recent project experience, I am aware that the Department of Environmental Quality for the state of Montana actually is the responsible agency for administrative processes in and around superfund sites. And so they have administrative requirements and work plans that are required when disturbing soil or doing other activities in, in sites such as this. And it's similar to a process that we potentially could go through with the Wellness Center as well. And so they, they do run that process administratively at the time of, of a building permit.
Great. I just wanted to make sure because if not a building being created or just moving, so that permit is still triggered.
So they
Make it a condition.
No, I'd be happy to, to consider that as a condition if, if you folks would like. I, the, the word that I have received from DEQ is that actually even moving soil on, on affected sites does trigger the, the work plan process.
Yeah, that's right. Does have to require a build permit.
Yeah.
So we don't require, man, just
Please, yes, please.
We do not require a permit for the grading, the city does not. And to ensure that, that process is, is taken care of before the earthwork and whatever the process is, whether it's looking at it after. I might suggest that we include a condition of approval, that whatever that, that DEQ process is, is we have a record that they are working with DEQ on that. We have something from DEQ saying, good to go. However, you want to phrase it, but I think it might not hurt to have that as a condition for here since we don't require that grading.
So like site work approved by DEQ.
Yeah, DE, DEQ process is triggered for earthwork. So I'm going to, I'm going to stop, I'm going to say one thing and then maybe stop us and, and get us in a, in a good process. I have some further thoughts, but there are more thoughts than they are clarifying questions. And I bet others do too. In general, at this moment, we would stop and make a motion and then go into public comment. If we make the motion now, there's the potential, and I don't know, but we may have to amuse that motion. So, Mr. Gager, I'm asking for some direction. Is it best to open public comment without a motion or open public comment and make a motion?
No, I'm sorry, I apologize. And I was actually going to inquire if the applicant wanted to a, address the commission at all before the public comment process.
Yes.
Yeah.
So
So, so
Yeah.
Exactly. So I, I might recommend that, that we hear from the applicant. And then due to, you know, the, the somewhat complex, possibly complex nature of, of some of these approvals, I, I might offer that in this case, it would be better for us to, to take public comment before the, the commission contemplates a motion.
My vote, commissioners agree with that. Just, okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you. So let's go ahead and hear from the applicant, if we may.
Hey guys. How many, how many, Andrew, tell them, sorry. Thanks for having me. So it's actually been the first presentation in court on historic community bike path. That really caught my attention. And those actually, that actually spoke more to me about why I started to do this. I've lived in Livingston for 12 to 13 years now. And like everyone else, you drive by KPRK and I love that building. You know, and I would like to buy it for that over and over. And why didn't you do it? It's not that easy, but, um, but for the same reasons of the other presentation of community values of the funk, the love, the, our forest tree that's in Livingston is what I love. It's one of the reasons I lived in it. And KPRK for me kind of sums up Livingston anyways. And I know it's before my time. I recognize that. But the intention and one of the painstaking process, and actually my architect, Josie Lucas, is what they, we're going to raise that building up. We're picking it up from its deck, basically that. And going to fill it in and roll it back down. And store it to the national historically registered conditions that the painstaking process takes. So I'm the crazy guy standing in front of you willing to do that. But I keep the lights on. And I want to do it and be a good neighbor. I want to be a great neighbor, actually. And the amphitheater is an extension of the radio station. So if we wanted to do a, someone has a local baking show. Who wants to come on, stand in the middle of the amphitheater and teach us how to make banana bread, he or she can do that live on the radio. If there's a band, sure, there'll be music. I love music. I've been making music for a long time professionally. I'm a sound engineer and I also do a lot of tests to ensure that we wouldn't disturb you. And my name is a special. And the amphitheater itself, I know your question about disturbing the ground, we're filling our top. I don't want, I don't want to touch it. Okay. Just like everyone else. And we're not even really sure if it's still there. So let's, we're not sure. No one has evidence of that, right? So it lets assume it's there. I still don't want to mess with it. And when I add it up, make it grass and it'll be a piece of art, just like Livingston is. And the artist or the speaker or the astronomer or the scientist, whoever's speaking, or it's elder books, bring on a, a local author to speak that night. I can blast it through the airwaves, 12th Park County. That's the spirit of this whole, whole project. And I mean it in the depths of my heart. I really don't have any other intentions other than resurrecting a dinosaur that everyone can enjoy. Because that's what it is. I mean, AM radio is dying, you know, it really is. And everyone's like, why are you doing this? And I'm doing this because I love Livingston, so I give that to it. And I'm going to need community support too with programming, which I haven't gotten to. And so I just want you guys to hear me, see me, know who I am. What the intention is, it's not an extension of my voice, it's an extension of what they said, the whole voice. And to bring back the slum shops and everything else that it would look like. Pet Patrol. But, but really authors and anglers, yeah. So that's, that's where it's at. If there's more specific questions, you know, that are maybe above my pay grade, I'm hoping myself, by the way, Jack, thank you. This has been awesome. I haven't gone through this process before, but it's been an amazing process so far. And Josie as well. So I don't know if there's anything else I could possibly add to that, but I'm not trying to do anything that's malicious and trying to add in the corner of town and hopefully bring back something that means a lot to all of us. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
And Kendra.
All right. So we will open up to public comment. And then go from there. So let's start with public comments first in the room. So if you're here to make public comments, come on up to the podium. I need you to just sign in, there's this paper up there. And then give us your name and address for the record. Sign in and we, your folks will have four minutes.
Thank you, Andrew. My name is Josh Obama. I live at 105 South East Street. And I really appreciate your attentions with this project and what you're trying to accomplish there. My main concern is that this side of town, east side, is a rather sleepy side of town. We're genuinely quite, quiet place. And I know a number of my, my neighbors have wanted to be here, but we all just found out about this today. I live two properties. I live one property adjacent to this proposed project. I had to find out that something like this could happen in my town, two properties away, that they're going to build an amphitheater next to my house was surprising to say the least. I would certainly recommend that this commission delay any decision on this until there's adequate public comment. As I can note, that a number of my neighbors are not present currently. And just a, just a piece of this is that I have multiple sclerosis. I've had it so for over 20 years. Sleep is a huge issue for me. It's one of the reasons why I chose to live in this part of town. I moved here from way up in the county, about a thousand feet above Bosom Pass. And just getting used to lawnmower noise of the railroad was, was kind of something to go through. Those are okay. Railroad pulses, port pulses at a time, I've explored establishing a quiet zone in the staff previously. The notion that there will be a concert venue with consistent drum and bass two, three times a week, ending at 11 o'clock is a health risk for me. And a number of my neighbors who some of which are elderly and require sleep throughout the summer months. So I definitely appreciate that. I also, when you had mentioned the lease agreement as part of this contract, wanted to make sure that that would be subject to revocation should that lease expire. And that the wording is adequate in that regard. I very, very much appreciate what this town needs. We've all wanted to see KPRK be restored. But when the flood happened in 2022, that was the first property that went under. And doing any earthworks at that property will necessarily affect what happens to myself and my neighbors. And I would strongly urge this commission to think very carefully about this. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Josh.
Any walls in the room? My name is Melanie Daniels and I live at 324 East Park Street. And I've never met Andrew until it's, I've lived in Livingston for almost 30 years. And, you know, every time I drive by, I always thought it would be wonderful to have that sort of building back in action again and creating a radio station is such a beautiful thing for all of us, for our community. And then I'm great. And I don't know about sound, but I know about amplifiers. You don't have to have things be too loud in order for people to hear that. So I think that is an interesting way of designing this space within town or right in the city limits that, you know, can provide more live music and live entertainment for all of us. Because as our city grows, we need more of that locally. And I think it is a beautiful way to incorporate that into our town. And it's very unique. Like I've never seen the brass amphitheater. And so I would, you know, ask them all to approve it, approve the special. And I thank you for doing the work to try and
Thank you, Melanie. Anyone else in the room? What's on it? I'll ask one more time, anyone else in the room? I'll ask one more time, anyone else in the room? All right, let's go online. Patricia, I think I saw your hand go up first. So Patricia, come off you. Give us your comment.
Yes. I absolutely love KPRK. I love his ideas in what he wants to do with that beautiful building. I had no concerns about Katy Barnell Park. But I, I have real concerns about KPRK in terms of the carcinogenic plume. Now, just a quick history of it. The trailer park was vacated and the motel was taken down, both of those because the carcinogens were so bad in that particular area. And four of the five people who worked at KPRK died of cancer very close to each other. Gary Weisgerber was a very good friend of mine. Peggy was on our board for the downtown building orders for one point, at one point. And and it was a horrible struggle that that man had with cancer. And they attributed it to his working at KPRK. As late as 2019, I, the Historic Society went out every year and mowed the lawn around KPRK because we loved the building so much. And wanted it to have its best foot forward. It's such a great way to, when you entered part of Livingston, to have that beautiful building there. But we were told by the owner at the time that we couldn't spend more than thirty minutes inside the building because of carcinogens. So that was 2019, that was, or 2018, that was, and Gary died that year of, of cancer. Because they said because of the carcinogens. So that was 2018. And if you look at the map of the mitigation of the plume, it's, it's kind of questionable if you've seen that map. So as much as I really love this idea, I love what he has in mind and so forth. I think it would be remiss on the part of the city commission not to be absolutely comfortable with the fact that there is that is truly cancer carcinogen free. I, I, I actually have doubts because of the fact that we were never allowed in that building for more than thirty minutes. And when it went on the market, I went ahead and got ahold of the agent at ERA who never said anything about carcinogens and told her the history of that building. So it just seems intelligent. Certainly wise to take a look at and really get, I, I have great faith in DEQ. I, I think they're a terrific group of people, did a wonderful job in mitigating that plume. I mean, we owe them and Park County Environmental Council as well, which spearheaded so much of that. So I, I'm just saying, I, I don't think this should be approved without even, even at this point, without the commission really taking a serious look at at, at what DEQ has to say about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Chris, I thought I saw your hands up. Would you like to make a comment?
Certainly. And I appreciate the looking more deeply into any kind of environmental impacts and public safety. That seems like a really important dynamic. We certainly don't want to get into investing into a resource that they may be a liability for public health reasons. But in addition to that, I think this is a fantastic project. I'm super excited about having that part of town, which has really been largely neglected commercially. Like, you know, the traffic for the brewery on that side of town has been slower. And so I'm, that's wonderful. And I was at Stafford Animal Shelter for ten years and did a radio show on KPRK twice a week about lost pets and pet behavior. And it was a really amazing experience to connect with the community. And I think one of the things about this project that's most exciting is about having that community voice and connection. And as newspaper becomes less commonly used as a community connector, I think having a radio station that becomes the hub of the community is really crucial. And as a director of Explore Livingston and we market Livingston as a year-round arts destination. Lots of the shows sell out in Paradise Valley. And there's not as many venues that are bringing acts that are bringing a lot of people to stay in hotels and spend at local restaurants. And I can see that this might be a wonderful extension of all of the different theater and literature and music arts that we have in great abundance in Livingston. So I'm super excited about the project and would love to be part of helping support it moving forward with a caveat of public safety. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Will you give your entire name for the public?
I'm so sorry. Chris King, 425 West Chinook.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else online? Would you like to give a public comment? Anyone in that room? I'll give one more time. One more in two minutes, okay?
I'd just like to say that I reviewed the white, they did the white noise test on the property to test decibel levels around there. And I reviewed that and sent it to some of my friends of mine. And white noise really isn't, in their opinion, the best way to test sound infusion. With the nature of pulsating bass and drums that penetrate through the ground and white noise has cancelling effects. Namely with the river nearby, that won't be felt. So I do take some contention with the white noise tests that they've done.
Right. One last couple of comments. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and pose the public comments.
So I think we have heard concerns around, or we've kind of discussed considerations on four different things. Five. Parking is one of them. Bathrooms is another. Effects to the floodplain and flooding. Potential effects of noise. And then past environmental issues caused stemming from past environmental degradation. I think that all of those are valid concerns. It seems to me as the resident transportation person that I think that the areas actually like uniquely well-served by, by transportation options. I think outside of the winter months in which the semis come through Park Street. That particularly the east side of Park Street is relatively traffic-free. And then there's the connection of the shared use path, which I think will encourage active transportation to events. So as far as accessibility, I think it's a pretty, pretty great location. When it comes to parking, I think if, if they are able to secure the MRL site adjacent, I don't see any issues with parking there. I, I think that the point about that parking needing to be available for the use to continue is a, is a smart consideration. I would, I would add though, that I don't know how events would be viable from a, from a private market perspective, if they did not continue to offer that parking. There's really just not, there aren't side street options for parking there. And actually, it would be really dangerous if that sort of park in front of a KPRK because that gets up to forty-five mile an hour right in front of the property there. So there would need to be off-street parking for this to be viable. And I think we can we can help mitigate that. And I think that the that, that's necessary. Bathrooms mentioned. I think that the noise concerns are valid as well. And I would, I would maybe lean on the model that we set with the considerations for the Shane Center building. It's kind of helpful that we did all that work just a few months ago. And I was happy with, with the way that we dealt with it there. And I think it's the same model or the same model would be appropriate here. And then as far as the environmental concerns, I think, again, those are valid. And it sounds like the plan is to simply add dirt to what is there, which, you know, might act as a capping on that. But I am no environmental expert with, with, you know, fellow commissioners and other experts in that. So my, my initial take is that we have some valid concerns. And I think we also have some recently established frameworks for addressing such concerns. And I'll, I'll go for now.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, you get a lot of good points for stories. This all, I'd like to say I could do a third or fourth concept or neat idea. Especially for this part of town. I can't think of a more appropriate use for, for that area. Okay, that being said, concerns about habitating that, the building itself. I'm sure with raising that building and stuff like that. You would mitigate, you know, like you would do any new construction inventory radon or anything like that. And they're gonna have to acquire building permit to raise that building as well. So those certainly should be met. I don't know how you go about finding out the plume that's proceeded there, you know, as we have in other areas. But from a lab building standpoint, as if I was the owner, I'd want soil testing. Know how you know, or is digging well, you know, wells or anything like that, since you're not disturbing soil, not going down. How important that is, that's not up to me. But I, I do believe that, you know, concerns are valid for, for health and safety in that regard. Overall, I, I really like this project and I would support it with, you know, certain conditions as by you.
You know, every time I go by there, I wonder whether we're gonna do with that building. It's been a long time. It's, it's an interesting concept and I just, I'm trying to think of the negative. But if we're gonna have that type of construction and that type of idea, I think that fits what might be okay and put it back to use again. So it seems to me it might be a win-win thing. Probably get a shout at it and we shall see. So I thank for people for having vision. But I think we're gonna experiment with something that's not a bad little area to do it because it wasn't nothing's happening down there right now. The floodplain, of course, is a worry. And the last one I came along with the flood did affect the housing down there. So this, that's a central issue. If that can be, that will be successful. I think that's the whole, that's the whole project. So, I yield.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Lyons, thank you for bringing, to kind of synergize us around those, those five topics. Because I feel like that's, that's where we're at. I like to talk about the, the noise, the effective noise. I know with the Shane Center, municipal code ten-five came up and that was about noises and noise amplification. And so we do have this code. The playing of any radio, sound amplification equipment or any musical instruments in such a manner with such volume, particularly during the hours between ten and seven AM at any time to annoy or disturb the quiet. And it goes on from there. So I, I would suggest kind of as we're sort of bringing all this stuff together and looking for ways to mitigate some of this, that we, we would move to the, the ten PM cutoff for events there with amplification, since that's what falls under municipal code. And that's where we were with the Shane Center too, that, that ten PM. Yeah. So I, I mean personally, I would be more comfortable with the, with the ten PM because then we're staying consistent with what we put in place for the Shane Center. And maybe we can even ask Mr. Gager to help us get to that point of especially around the sound. What we had specifically said around the Shane Center for sound. I think it makes sense that we're consistent and it's the same exemption, the same type of exemption. So to be consistent across the board seems like the best place for us all to be. So I would, I would make a suggestion with that. I, I would still like to see condition that any, you know, they're bringing or moving down there, whether they're bringing in the dirt or taking it away. That DE, DEQ process is triggered for that work, which it sounds like it would, it would be, but I would like to just make sure to make sure that that happens. I mean, it is our responsibility, commissioners, for the health and safety of the community. So that seems like an important topic and, and issue to just make sure everybody's safe. So that would be something that I would like to see. Mr. Gager, can I ask Jen a question about floodplain?
Oh, please, yeah.
Jen, I, I know we, we had a gentleman that came up that lives in that area, does seem concerned about we're on private properties, so it gets a little more complicated, but work work at KPRK somehow affecting flooding and other properties. Were out of the floodplain where this is happening? Do you have any, do you have any thoughts on that?
So in order to get a flood plain development permit, you can't cause one. So all of that will be looked at again. It's, it's the way this is, is doing is, is because they're not doing anything in the floodway. There's enough area sort of to absorb a lot of that before you can get to any structures. Like I said, we when I spoke to DNRC, I don't think we were specifically not sure how we figured that out because we're, we're morphing through our floodplain requirements. But if a no rise certificate is required as part of a project, then we would have to get that. They would need to shut up. Certainly, we're not going to push it off on anybody downstream, find anybody around it coming from flood recovery work in Colorado for five years. I recognize the importance of that. So yeah, any, anything that, that is required for that floodplain permit. And again, we might be modifying the ordinance, but it actually will be making it more restrictive on development and more requirements for what's needed for a floodplain permit than we have now. So, yeah.
You feel like that would be in place before this project started?
It has. So the floodplain permit, I think that's one of the conditions. Even though, again, and I would just kind of remind about the, I have radon and the structure, the structure is not part of this review. But the floodplain permit is going to be required for the grading work, for the amphitheater and for the structure. And we've been advised by FEMA, who I also met last week, to issue those separately. So one for the structure, one for the amphitheater to keep them So one for the structure, one for the amphitheater to keep them nice and clean and separate. Um, yeah, the elevation certificate is going to be required for the work on structure. Um, I think they're doing some drainage improvements around that to ensure that it does not get watered again. And, uh, it's pretty, maybe twenty-four inches. I mean, it's about, it's based on elevation. And then of course, there's no elevation for the, the amphitheater because it's new. But, um, yeah, all, all the requirements seem to be met. If, if the no rise certification is there as part of it, we'll have to have that in place. After the work is done, so they would not be able to move forward until we would see that if it's the requirement.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful and hopefully helpful for folks to hear in the audience, um, as well. Um, I think it would make sense, kind of moving on, I think it might make sense to put something about the continuational need for park lease of the property. For the, so that they can continue to have events with that, with gauges or something. Can we add that?
Okay. Can I make a suggestion about that?
Sure.
Just because I think that from my understanding of the discussion, we're more concerned with there being ample parking and not necessarily that it's parking on that property. And there might be something else, maybe the, the neighborhood to the south or whatever. So you might tailor that condition to, yeah. Yeah, to basically they have to, if something happens with that lease or if they're not able to, to utilize that property to park anymore, that the already new events would be done or, or they would have to come up with an parking and share that information with the city. And we're gonna know it. I mean, we're gonna know it pretty quickly if they can't use that and we see a ton of cars on the road.
Yeah. I think just to, to make sure and always remember properties can change hands and one owner can have the best intentions and keep the best intentions. And one of the property changes hands, that next owner may not have those intentions. So just, just so everybody understands, we're looking at long-term, not, you know, not just the one person. So we're looking at long-term for everybody and that's where we have to think. So just, just to keep you in, kind of in the loop where we're, where I'm thinking and I think the rest of the commissioners are.
And I think it's adequate parking for the events. Because again, they, 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 if for some reason something happens, as long as, and it could be something we bring back to you if you wanted to see it. But it may be that they institute shuttles or, um, you know, they have more white parking and provide some sort of incentives for people to utilize that. But it, it just may not be parking on a property.
That's fine. Yeah, as long as we have ample parking, continuation of ample parking. That would be great. And I'm just, I think that's all I have for now. I'm gonna stop because I feel like something I don't, and I wonder if we might do one more round and see where folks are at, if that seems appropriate to my commissioners.
I'll make a comment. Please, you know, you recently annexed this property into the city. And, uh, a lot of these discussions we're having right now, we're still in county, we probably would not be able to. So, fortunately, it's part of the city. And, uh, you do have a lot of input and a lot of control. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Flex, Commissioner Lyons.
Um, no, I think that, I think that we high level covered the concept. I would maybe look to tonight's chair and the city manager about where that currently brings us in terms of process and making a decision. And, uh, but I think I feel like we've kind of discussed the, the major points at a, at a high level.
Thank you. Commissioner Freeman, anything else?
No, the only thing, uh, is sitting there doing nothing. Uh, and somebody comes along with an idea. And if it's not a perfect idea, but it's a perfect place to try something. Those situations don't come up that often. Got a building sitting there and sitting there, sitting there. And somebody comes along and says, I think I have a little bit of an idea. I think it's worth a shot. Good luck.
Thank you, Commissioner Freeman. Mr. Gager, I, um, I'm looking for some help, I think, here. Um, I feel like I sort of, I think we kind of know where we need to be. I'm wondering best, best step forward, is it for us to take a break and us to come up with uh, conditions that seem right? Or I've seen you writing over there, you have conditions you think will work or I'm looking for some, for some help.
Mm-hmm. No, a, a, absolutely, uh, Vice Chair Kell. Um, so from my notes, what I believe I heard, uh, from the commission was, um, uh, potentially modifying the first condition to state, you know, something to the effect that the, the, the lease um, or a comparable arrangement that provides a similar amount of parking must remain in place for events. Um, and, and that, you know, really assures that there is parking available for the events, um, but also contemplates a future that, that may involve another property or a different arrangement. Um, and then I also, um, heard, uh, the, the possibility of, of adding a condition. Um, and, and I've, you know, attempted to wordsmith here that the, the applicant shall ensure that the project complies with all Montana DEQ requirements for work at a super fund affected site. And, um, I would offer my experience again with, uh, with DEQ over the last several weeks is that that will, um, such a, that those requirements do include work plans for, um, handling of soil. Uh, but they do also, uh, to address some of the concerns that, that have been voiced here by community members. Um, they do also have indoor air monitoring requirements, um, for certain properties during the duration of project work. Um, and, and so that is, is something just based on the city's knowledge and, and recent experience. That's something I would expect would, would be, um, a part of that, those requirements. Um, and then thirdly, um, there was a, a little bit of talk, um, related to the, the noise ordinance. And, um, you know, the, the treatment that a recent special exception applicant, um, received was that, um, the, the city actually limited the number of events, uh, that could occur, um, past certain hours of the day. Again, that was, um, a slightly different situation and a, and a little bit more of a dense neighborhood. Um, but, but I, I guess I would offer that up, um, as, as a possibility in this situation. Um, but I, you know, as, as we discussed with that special exception review, and, and I will put the, the ordinance on the, on the screen here for, for those that might be more visual learners than auditory. But, um, the, the, the current noise ordinance, while it specifies, um, noise between or, you know, contemplates that the, that, the playing of sound amplification equipment, um, in a manner, uh, that annoys or disturbs the comfort or repose of any person in any dwelling or other type of residence. Um, while, while we do note that that is, um, particularly, uh, not, um, something that we're looking for between ten PM and seven AM. The, the way the ordinance is actually written is that, um, at any time of day, if, if someone were to play, uh, the radio or their sound amplification in, in a way that, um, disturbs someone in a residence, the, the city would have the, the ability to, um, enforce the, the ordinance and, and act upon the, the property owner there. So, um, you know, you, if, if we would like to contemplate limiting the number of events as we did with, with the other applicant, an option here. Um, but, but I, I would offer that there are, um, some protections for, for residents, uh, in, in all hours of the day, again, excessively loud noise. Oh, yeah, please.
Just so my recollection of the discussion, I'm actually looking at the final conditions for the Shane Center. Just I remember a comment that was brought up and, and that is, um, to option protections to the, the applicants. Because the way that the ordinance is written is that anybody can say, well, I have a headache and you're disturbing me and that shuts everything down. Um, so, uh, the condition of record that the Shane Center said they would do this by, by the ordinance. I mean, I would again, kind of maybe suggest in the long ones, because if, if our noise ordinance changes and we condition this to be a certain finite, um, then, and I, I think you could do that now to, to comply with the noise ordinance if you wanted to do it at ten PM. But I would maybe recommend tacking on that complying with the noise ordinance at the time.
Oh, uh, absolutely, you know, and I, I actually, I would offer that, um, even if we don't add, uh, a condition specific to complying with the noise ordinance, that is actually a requirement of, of all members within the city of Livingston, uh, commercial, residential or, or otherwise to, to comply with the noise ordinance. But, um, not, not necessarily a bad idea to specifically point that out for this type of venue. Um, and I would offer the, the, the modification to condition A, um, and the potentially, um, you know, which dealt with parking. And then the potential addition of, of a condition related to DEQ requirements. Um, you know, I, perhaps we may want to, you know, discuss with the applicant if those are, you know, amendable. Um, but I, those two don't seem like they, um, really comp, would complicate the situation that much. You know, the, the DEQ requirements are required anyway. Um, and, and one might assume that the, um, provision of ample parking is, is somewhat required for the successful operation of the business. So, um, you know, I, I don't think we've created a situation that's too arduous for the applicant, but I was happy to check back in with the applicant before anything's approved, um, moving forward.
So let us have a little bit more discussion and then we can check back in with the applicant. Does that seem fair? And I would just say, from all of that, I do like the idea of, of somebody that just says complies with any city noise ordinance. I still, my preference, just because it's the same with the Shane Center, is like the latest time they can go is ten o'clock. And I think that ten o'clock seems like a cutoff time. You end an event at ten o'clock, it's still gonna take an hour for people to leave and get off the property and they're still gonna be found. So, um, that would be sort of where I'm leaning.
Yeah, one, um, what what comes to noise with, um, Shane Center, what what are we allowing with that event-wise, two to three per week or, or how, I can't remember how we limit it.
Um, so, and again, this was because we had that initial discussion with the Shane Center between the first and the second hearing. Um, it came back as a commitment of record by the municipality condition, but that was something that's a condition. Um, and that was, if you're talking about for the, the number of events, like, um, theirs was, uh, they were allowed to have, um, amplification after five, so all the events to fifty per year. But in events annually that you less than amplification after eight PM to a maximum of ten. And they were also required to, not as clear as perhaps it could have been, now that I'm looking back at it, but it's complying with the noise ordinance. And they said they would cut it at ten. So we're looking at, if you're going similar, ten PM, um, if you want to cap it or end it at ten, they had ten of those annually. And if you, there's a question about what annually means because it's like you could say per, for that season or something.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, because the, it's, you know, noted in here, you know, they just pay two, three, that's for weeks. And I don't think that's outrageous at all, especially given its location. So.
What was added to that?
Absolutely.
Um, I think the conditioning of the number of events was not just related to noise, but was also related to some of the other potential adverse effects to that neighborhood. Some of which would be very different in this application. The noise one obviously is, is the same. But parking and traffic, um, are, are much less salient in this, in this context. So, um, you know, I, I think that's something to consider if we're talking about limiting the number of events. You know, I,
Yeah, it's a whole different situation in regards to that, but it's, you know, as a basis of what.
And those events are a lot larger too.
Yeah, a thousand people versus two hundred and fifty, four times bigger.
Right, so.
The city manager, can I actually, um, now that he's mentioned that, um, um, because I think this may help the discussion. You were, I suppose, for Commissioner Lyons, um, when we looked at that, that, um, the number of events needed to be tied to, um, impacts specifically, I think the most concern with Shane Center was the city's resources as far as staffing for fire EMS. So what I would like to just kind of remind everybody of is, and this is also reflected a bit in the conditions for this proposal. The cutoff for, or the requirement for the EMS services, um, to, to be part of that, whether it's standby or other, um, was three hundred feet. If you recall, and there were a couple of different requirements versus whether it was three hundred, I think five hundred. Um, for this, the applicant is proposing two hundred and fifty is the max. So although I have recommended a condition, um, to work with fire rescue, um, or an emergency access plan for times when that's used for parking, and again, that's for access for emergency responders. I don't anticipate the same strain on any city resources that was tied to that frequency condition, if I recall, um, because they're not going to trigger the need for those. Does that make any sense?
It does, no.
And that's the same thing for mine.
Jen, can I ask you or, or Mr. Gager, they're saying two hundred and fifty on their application. If they decided in ten, in five years that they were gonna expand or they were gonna let more people sit on the lawn and now it's five hundred, did that have to come back for us?
Yes.
Statement of record in the application is that they will track, um, numbers. Which I can't find it, I'm going to possibly say it wrong, but I think ticketing and through a controlled access point. So right now, your approval would be for as proposed conditions of record max. Um, I can tell you just with my discussions with the applicant and, um, his architect, I mean, they have been so nervous of coming. And we need to make sure that they, you know, got all their rights, all their duties. So, I mean, I, I, and again, I think that people, if they weren't, right, eight hundred people there.
I, I would just like to know that it would trigger that they would have to come back. Again, the whole idea of a new owner, something changes, we've seen that in other venues in this area. So I think that that's something to keep in mind.
Yes, because it does stay with the property.
Correct. I'm checking in. Yes, Commissioner Lyons.
I just want to go back to the, a brief discussion of frequency.
Yep.
So we were, we brought up, we brought up frequency, but then we talked about how the situation's a little different. Frequency of events has not made it onto any of the proposed conditions. And as we discussed with the Shane Center one, it was largely related to strain on, on, or was related to the potential impacts that we can see consideration. It seems, it seems that's there, yes, except for noise. Although if, if we have, if the applicant is required to comply with noise ordinance, if they're complying with the noise ordinance, the noise ordinance is in place every day of the week. And so compliance should kind of cover that. In theory, it would cover that potential adverse impact. And so my, my take of that analysis is that it wouldn't make sense in this case to apply a, like, a frequency condition. That's just my assessment. That's just my assessment, but that's that's what I.
And I would say because we have it on now that we've asked these other things, we have it as the record of two to three. Is that where they're at?
That is what is in the proposal and so we'd be capped at three, I think there, again, yeah, same with. The season is warmer months, it's we happen to have really cold seasons. For some reason in September it starts snowing, I'm gonna guess they may have that. But if you take May to September. But anyway, um. I'm free, assume the maximum for the. That's what's on the record unless.
Yeah, and that's what they have on their.
I find that. What Tori lined up and the number.
It's not that's kept there unless they.
Um, okay. So we've had a discussion. I think. Mr. Gager has helped us. Kind of um. Change. Condition A. Um we talked about adding. The D E Q process is triggered and he has language for that and then we also talked about. Changing. Saying ten o'clock is. Yep, and that was part of A, right? So so those are our things, so the biggest changes are. You always have to have parking. You know, it has to stay consistent with the property, whether it's that piece or something else. We're asking you to make sure that you're working with the D E Q, which sounds like it would be triggered anyway. And Andrew, I'm looking at you, I'm sorry, I'm not true, but I'm kind of talking about you. That that would be an additional condition. The the next additional condition would be to change you from eleven to ten to stay consistent with the other venues. Before I come to you. Did I miss anything?
No, I think you did.
I that was, that was all I heard, that the third condition is, um yeah, but it it did seem like there's a commission. Uh so I actually was going to clarify, you know, the the third. Um condition, because I saw you raise your hand when that was noted, you know, I don't know if the condition discussion was. That event shall end at ten P M or if the condition was that the the venue will comply with the. Current city noise ordinance.
I think that that makes more sense, um because. If we, if you know, we were talking about two potential new. Venues in town coming online in the next couple of years. Um and we'll get a sense of what, you know, of how that noise ordinance is working for our community. And if we find that it's not, instead of having a specific condition on one place. That's just a policy that we can address by policy rather than by situation, situation by situation. So I think. With the current noise ordinance already saying. Is that correct? Already saying that's what we're asking for. So just compliance with the noise ordinance and then if if compliance with the noise ordinance is not ending up being sufficient. For these these two or however many venues in town, we can address that by ordinance. Um instead of by conditions.
Or by updating.
Yeah, so if it's not working, then we would update the ordinance.
But there's no sense making a condition when it's up to the ordinance, so there's.
Because then we'd have to, we'd have to go back and revisit each case where instead of. We don't want to revisit each case, we want to set up a city policy.
I'm gonna ask. Mr. Gager, one thing, if an ordinance changes, no one has grandfathered in under an ordinance. Is that true?
Well, um there are, there are certain situations where pre-existing non-conforming. Um use or structure. Um may not be immediately brought into compliance, but. Um things like a a noise ordinance or a parking ordinance. Um those do not have pre-existing non-conforming conditions that would be allowed to have continues, so.
If I may, the one concern I have, and then Jim brought this up from an enforcement standpoint, is if you. If you use the ordinance. And I understand what you're trying to say from a policy standpoint, it makes sense, but from an enforcement standpoint, if. If some neighbor calls up and says. You know, the the noise is bothering me at seven o'clock. Uh then law enforcement is gonna have to enforce that. That code section, so. But I do understand it allows flexibility because you can change the ordinance to meet the, you know, changing standard. But but it does from, it makes things confusing, like law enforcement is gonna have to go out there and. If one or one neighbor is complaining about the noise, they're gonna have to. Deal with that, so. I think it might make more sense to have some kind of limitation in here, subject to change, you know, that you can change it in the future. Because otherwise. I think you're gonna have. One person can cause a lot of problems if you just rely on the noise ordinance.
Did no, and I would offer, that's what the noise ordinance has currently written, um does have have a little bit of of that ambiguity in it, but.
Do you have, can I ask Mr. Gager, do you have a recommendation around this? I feel like you understand where we're trying to get, I wonder if you have a recommendation.
Yeah, I um I I i- in this situation, as we did with with the similar applicant recently. Um I I do think that having compliance with the current noise ordinance is is probably a good way to go. It it does allow us to have the policy conversation about about what is allowable. Um and and what the community will bear and allow the community to have public input, because I think as Commissioner Lyons, you know, astutely pointed out. That the limitation on the number of shows um for the other applicant was um was related to more than noise. And and so we we crafted that solution for for a number of different reasons, so I I certainly understand. Uh the the point that the city attorney is making, um and that's why I've noted, I I think it's, you know, incumbent upon us to have the policy conversation of. Of what what the appropriate uh noise ordinance for the city of Livingston is really for.
Yeah, I think it's. I think that it is going to be a future policy consideration for us. And I think that the fair and efficient way to do that, to have that consideration is not. Case by case, but see what. And I and I appreciate uh Mr. Gager's suggestion that that is going to elicit further public comment. On that specific topic, um and that might be the best then to make these decisions.
So, Mr. Gager, would you suggest that we add a condition that says compliance with any. City noise ordinance or it's just implied that you have to abide by the city noise ordinance?
Uh yeah, a- as I indicated, it is implicit in in everybody's behavior in the city of Livingston, they will comply with it. Living in municipal code, whether it's related to parking noise or or other things, so. Um if if it's, you know, pleases the commission, you may add the condition, but it's not necessary.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
No, I'm, I don't know what you thought, so tell me, were you telling me?
No, I didn't think there was necessary to put a condition since there weren't. Um one point of clarification, do we? Once we come up with these conditions, then we have to present it to the. Advocate of the.
Give them the opportunity.
Right, give them the opportunity, yay or nay or.
I'll also add that we haven't uh made an induction yet.
Exactly. Thank you. So what I, I think what I would suggest, and I'm gonna ask the city manager how I assess this. I'm gonna talk us through one more time about what these conditions might look like for a potential motion. We can give the applicant the opportunity to make a comment around those changes. And then we can move forward with potentially making a motion. Does that sound? Okay, so I'm gonna try to um. Pull this down and I may have to steal notes, but um so we're we're gonna do in addition to. Staff recommendations um with the conditions that. And I will say this generally, that there will always be sufficient parking um for this venue. Whether it's that M R L property or another. And he will make it more specific.
To getting it more specific. So sufficient could be ambiguous.
Yeah, and so the the language I had come up with for that was that the lease. Or another comparable arrangement providing a similar amount of parking must remain in place. Um for the use.
And the amount of parking is on record.
It is uh one hundred and six spaces is the total parking at this point. We had your guess, that could catch.
Okay. And then the other addition will be, and I'm gonna let you say it.
The applicant shall ensure that the project complies with all Montana D E Q requirements for work at a super fund affected site.
So those would be, we suspect, we've not made a motion yet, but we suspect that that would be. Any changes to what this the staff has, so Andrew, I'm gonna ask you. If you have. Any additional comments around that before we move forward. Absolutely.
Thank you, by the way. Just in regards to, like, you guys are all getting this, it was great because I'm, again, I'm very. The Shane Center stage that you guys went through is super dense, I went to a show there, parking I couldn't find. And then the sound, I'm soundaging on the roof, I'm the only one who's challenging, I believe, and that sound slaps around the whole neighborhood. Okay, this is the way we're designing the amphitheater. Out of grass, I mean, if if it goes in a bowl, okay, and the poet. Or musician, whatever the whoever the actor is gonna be or the baker is standing in this with amplification pointing towards porous grass. Will be absorbing that sound, my true neighbors, the nearest house is only five, it's five hundred feet away, there are machines that I gotta. Highway, river, trucks, those are where I'm supposed, I mean, be realistic, this is like, you know, that's what, the noisiest person again. In Livingston is the train station. Hands down, that's who we should all be, not not with what I'm trying to do here. Um I wanna point that out, because we put a lot of thought into how do we absorb this, how we do it, trying to really argue it. Not many of these exist in the world, so for me to do some Livingston, yeah, and by the way, this is also. Three frequencies, what happens if I got four poetry slams in one week? As opposed to two or three, that's this is what's gonna keep the lights on, so please don't hold my word on the two to three part. Because if it's four in a row, you know, on something, then next week, there's no one there, that's what it is, and this is what really pays for the radio station, no one else is paying for this. So if you guys take that, it would literally cut me off at one a week or two a week, we cannot pay for the organization. So we can just, that's the part I wanna say be really clear about, this is an economic part of K P R K. And all this is not easy. And if you want, make one. Um Saturday a month till eleven P M, how about that? Um so see if we get someone really special, right, say, you know, there's there's another engineer in the valley. Who we're gonna try to get, spring some really special people to Livingston, see what we can do. That artist may go, may wanna go a little bit later, is that okay for one Saturday a month to be till eleven? If not, cool, ten P M will work, because I know that's what uh Higbee gets, right, and that's what Shane Center gets. Again, I'm at a different part of town, as you guys totally get it, but um I think that was the only thing. Else, uh but just to know that this grass bowl is designed to absorb, not put it around the, yeah, the last thing I wanna do is noisy. Uh and it's not gonna be only music. So that's why we shot a hundred desks of constant white noise, because no one's gonna be doing that, I can speak. It's quiet and then get loud, you know, that's just the way it works with 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 music and noise, I wanna say, that's why we. Tried to be as annoying as we could during our desk protest, that was intentional, so it was, we don't wanna do that in real life. Anyway, that's all I got. Thank you, I'll go back up.
So I'm gonna, you, why don't you send the front row, oh, go ahead, okay, go ahead.
Um so in in our, what what's presented to us in staff report, there is the. Commitment to two to three cents per week. And that came up in our discussion, and so I wanna clarify, you know, I'm hearing from you. An interest in possible more, I I understand, you don't have to explain the the. But uh there was discussion of what's in here to include week being a limitation on frequency. Are we hearing from you that that's that?
Yeah, that's why I came up, I said, well, I I wanna be specific about that, I hope, look, we're lucky to get two or three people, we got that, I don't wanna be doing this. Twenty-four seven, you know, um if I don't have to, hoping other people can get involved, you know, to help do this. But if they're saying we do get, I don't know, someone that wants to be four next, or am I gonna be able to say no? So that.
So maybe a seasonal average of two, three per week, about.
It's only gonna be, it's outside, it's only gonna be from May thirty-first to September first, I mean, if the weather works for us.
You're gonna put a little attention on music.
That's a wide.
Two to, I mean, I'm like, I guess, yeah, yeah.
I naturally brought, see, you know, one of its opera, one of its one single voice that has the heart support, so, you know, I'm serious. Yeah, yeah, so I just, that's the one thing I would plan out, uh which is that in in the package, that's why I came up, as I answered, two to three might be. One of its four and one, one of its zero the next week, I don't know, you know, I'm saying, because it is a business, it will choke off the business.
An average would would work.
But yeah, an average of like. I'm gonna try that, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to get one, like, we're talking about tracking. So uh, you know, it's traction.
We're so, we're just trying to figure out language and and assuring that what what we're voting on.
If you want, I mean.
But is is going to persist in the future, that's that's our responsibility on this side. Right, is is thinking about the long-term security of Livingston, and so while I hear you and I think that you're absolutely right. That it it's gonna start at a certain rate and it could develop and grow, what what we're voting on. Is gonna be the maximum. The maximal impact on the community, that's the decision that we're.
And I would say, and I would say too, we had to put the two to three, you know, the two to three came from you, so and we're not adding anything. So let's, I'm gonna stop everybody. If that's okay, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Gager. Where are you at, what what do you think in this conversation?
Well, um I we sure seem like we perhaps are headed towards a a potentially a seasonal or annual. Cap of of shows, you know, so if we were to look at, you know, the May to September timeframe, you know, my rough math is that's about. Five months there, um but if.
June, July, August, September.
So, uh okay, so if we look at four months and we, you know, a- assume the the four weeks per month average that we get. You know, works us out to sixteen weeks, and if we were to do, um you know, four shows is is sixty-four shows. Four shows a week for sixteen weeks is sixty-four shows, um three is is forty-eight over the sixteen. And so I I don't know if the the commission would wanna contemplate, um just just as we did with the Shane Center where we capped fifty shows past eight P M. Uh and ten shows, excuse me, fifty past five P M, ten shows past eight P M, um we may consider a an overall cap on on this. Um as a solution, which would allow some week-to-week flexibility for the operator, I don't know. I don't know if that would be something that would be available to you.
Let's cabinet by a week, that's that's fine, I just want to give it, give this.
I think, so I'm gonna kind of stop us in, I think probably our best option is an overall average because that way you're not, you could have a really big week and then a no, no show, like nothing, right? So we're, you're better off, we're better off to look at it as an overall, that would be mine, season total. And so fifty.
Sixty, sixty-two? Well, sixteen and four months, you know, it's sixty-two, right?
Sixty-four, yeah, four times sixteen, sixty-four.
This is degree sixty, then we'll give a little, we're going to grow.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you stop just because I don't, I don't think we should be negotiating.
Oh, and I was going to say, you know, if if we are getting to a point where um, you you know, the 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 modification to condition A about maintaining the parking and the the modification or the additional condition G with regard to D E Q where I I haven't sensed any issues with those from the applicant. So you know, what I would offer here is is if we're in a situation where there's perhaps a little bit of work to be done with the applicant and staff, you know, we we could continue this and and bring it back to you folks at the next meeting after we've had an opportunity to to come to an agreement. Or you know, if if there's no obvious agreement here, that can be be achieved.
Okay, so I'm going to have you sit down. Thank you, Andrew, so much.
Hadn't we discussed the difference between this application and the previous and the use of frequency for the previous as a control of other factor, other impacts that that weren't or were less applicable to to this application?
We did.
So um and and I, this is a point that I brought up, the chains and application, that I think are our conditions in order for them to be durable need to be related to an impact. And I I am, I would offer that. I I had suggested earlier that that the impacts of this of this application, in my opinion, have been addressed by the other conditions and that we use frequency for different considerations with the previous application. And and if if sound is not an issue that or if sound is covered by the noise we're nice. Sound seems like the only issue that that frequency would would come to play a role because we're not worrying about or we have less concern about impacts on EMS fire. Please, we have less worry about impacts on traffic and parking. So limiting frequency to me seems potentially superfluous uh when we're when we're covering the potential of impacts and other. And 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 I I'm not saying that I I have an authority or authoritative opinion on that, but my opinion that I stated earlier is that we're covering the potential impacts with these other conditions and frequency was something we used in a separate case that had to be written condition.
This is my question. In our condition that we are looking at right now, we're not mentioning anything about the number of shows. And it's the applicant's. It's what's in the applicant's application, so. Where we would buy, I don't think it's our place to amend his application.
Um, well, it has been an hour and a half since we took our our last break and actually, yeah, we we should, if anyone would like to take a motion to extend.
On favor.
Um. Sorry. So, yes, as as you pointed out, the applicant has has noted that they anticipate two to three shows per week during the the May to September. And so we are using that as as their commitment. It is, it is not as firm a commitment as as could possibly be with the the little bit of ambiguity of two to three. So I think, you know, as a city, we would interpret that as as up to three shows per week for the the May to September period.
I don't. So I think that we are happy with our conditions, and I'm, and I'm, then I'm going to have a second break, but just to get us to a stopping point.
Right.
I think that we're happy with our conditions, our conditions do not include any number of shows. We're going by what we're, what's in front of us. I don't know that I have or any of us have the ability to amend someone's application. So I guess what I need to know from you, Mr. Gager is, now what?
Well, if the application has been submitted, we have an application before us. If if you folks are comfortable with the revised condition A and and new condition G, then then you can act on on the application before you. I will look at the applicant, I I don't know if they would want to revise the application or or submit a new one if knowing that that, you know, the intent of the city is to to hold them to the three shows per week, you know, estimate, but but I will say that's that's the application that has been submitted and and is before you. And and so as as the planning director pointed out, you know, there are four actions we can take, we can approve, we can delay for thirty days, we can deny or we can approve with conditions, and so you know, you folks have the the ability to take those four actions.
Should we ask the applicant if he would like to amend his application? But it can't happen tonight, it's going to have to happen when we might.
Yeah, we would, at at that point, my recommendation would be for us to continue the hearing until the next meeting, so we can have an opportunity to work with the applicant to ensure that
that that this works.
Andrew, I'm asking you, do you want to amend your application, which would mean we we'd stop and we bumped to next, to the next meeting and you can make any amendments to your application? Or are you happy with the way that your application is? And shall we move ahead? I'll give you the option. You're gonna wait?
Yeah, wait a second, I see a second.
How about this, we're going to take a break, I'm going to take a break, we're we're going to, I'm going to ask for a break, you discuss, that's the question on the table, and then we'll come back. May I have a motion for? Let's make a ten minute break, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman for a ten minute break, all in favor? Hi, uh, okay, we'll see you in ten minutes, that'll put us at eight fifty-one-ish.
Put us on mute and set a timer. Go where we left off.
Thank you all, uh, we're going to call this meeting back to order. Um, and so I think the question on the table and all of it, Mr. Gager, um, was uh whether the applicant wanted to amend his application and bring it back to us, um, or leave the application on the table.
In the break, the planning director and I had some discussions with the applicant and in order to kind of provide a little bit of of certainty and and clarity, I think more importantly, the the applicant signaled that you know, if we translated as as their application notes, they anticipate up to two to three performances per week during the warmer months of May to September. And and using the math that we did earlier, a sixteen week season, that's the ten minute break is up, sorry. A a sixteen week season with three shows per week would be approximately forty-eight shows. The applicant has has indicated that that they would be comfortable accepting a condition that limited them to fifty shows for the course of the season. And and that again was derived to sixteen weeks, three shows a week, so if if that pleases the commission, it is amenable to the applicant and and could be added as a a condition tonight.
Commissioner. Mr. Lyons, Commissioner Lyons, excuse me. I see you ponder.
That that figure is so acceptable with me, I I have some trepidation around limiting frequency, um, just kind of based on justifying that based on impact, like we had that discussion, I think that that connection is a little less clear with this application and so I just have trepidation around that. But the the figure is fine, the applicant's happy with it, it seems like a moot point. Just kind of by on the the theory of it, doesn't feel particularly strong.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
Acceptable, I mean.
Acceptable to you? Okay, I think because the applicant, the applicant seems happy with it, that it seems appropriate to to move forward with it. Um, and so with that, uh, we can add that, so we should, we should, Mr. Gager, add that as a condition to our conditions of up to fifty shows a season. With that, I think we've come to some agreement, is that the case, I just wanted to make sure that we're there. We're going to have to make an adjustment to the, so I think at this point we'll make a motion um, and see if we can get a second. Mr. Gager, I know you've got some things written down over there. I'm happy to make the motion with what Mr. Gager has written down. If you think I can read your handwriting.
I think for the most part, it's pretty legible. Let me know if you stumble, but.
Have your mind.
I I'm just, I'm just some arrows.
Okay. Okay, all right. So I'm going to attempt to make this motion and then commissioners, you can take and leave it. Okay, so ready? I move to approve special exempting permit for the proposed K P R K amphitheater to be used as an outdoor event venue to include the conditions outlined by staff with the adjustments, okay, in a letter A, we will add to the end.
Yeah, the lease.
The lease, okay. The lease or other comparable arrangements, oh my god.
Providing a similar.
Providing a similar amount of parking must remain in place for all four events. Okay. Um, we will add an additional condition, which will be condition G. Applicant shall ensure that the project complies with all Montana D E Q requirements for work at our super fund affected site. We will then add E, which says.
H, I believe actually is after G.
H, yes, sorry, H, the venue may host fifty events using amplified sound each year. Okay. Now the second alliance, so that's a motion by Kail. Second by Lyons, now. Do we need to reopen to public comments?
It, you don't have to if you don't like, you've already conducted public comment, yes.
Okay, so, motion seconded, any further discussion?
I would, I I don't think it would be bad practice to give the public another opportunity to share that, because we've made a lot of developments since the last.
I'm fine with that, so let's go ahead and open it to public comment. So anyone who would like to make additional public comment will start in the room? Anyone additional public comment? Feel free to come up, please.
I really appreciate the commission's time and the diligence that the applicant has for. I would like to stress for the commission members that you're underestimating the quality of life that the East Siders of town live under. In your comparison of this to the Shane Center, you said that it would be less impactful. But for people that live around the Shane Center, they're living downtown, they're living in a high density residential zone. The people affected by this are in different parts of town, they are used to a quality of life that is quiet. And this will greatly impact them. That being said, I also want to make sure that none of my neighbors are going to be calling up because of the noise ordinance, the ordinance shutting concerts down, and I don't feel like this particular process has addressed that. I imagine that you all address that in subsequent meetings when you discuss changes to the laws or. Thanks.
Can we give us your name one more time for the?
Josh Taylor.
Thank you, Josh. Any more public comment for folks in the room? We'll go online, any additional public comment for folks online, I do see a Ray Stevenson, Ray, go ahead and unmute, uh, unmute yourself and give your name and address if you would please.
Hi, I'm Ray Stevenson, I'm at seventy-five Willow Creek.
Go ahead.
Um, I live over across the tracks and I'm really concerned about this venue, just echoing what the recent speaker said. You know, it's peaceful and quiet over here and like the sound projects from town up here, it projects from the rodeo. You know, in the springtime, summer, fall months, like, our lifestyle is all about being outside and having peace and quiet. And I have a really hard time believing that even if the venue is situated in a certain way, that it'll dampen the noise, that we don't have to listen to the sound from the venue. I also work at the hospital and I try to go for walks at the Myers Trail, that's my peace and quiet to rejuvenate. I'm I'm quite concerned about the noise disruption from this project. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Ray. Any other additional comments from online? Okay, seeing none? Christina Nelson, I see you're not muted, did you want to make a comment? You don't have to say anything else.
She might not actually be connected to the audio.
Great, all right, that's fine, okay, uh, so I'll go ahead and post public comments. Any additional discussion? Right. I think we're at a spot where we can go ahead and make, do we, do we want to, we're ready to vote?
Vice Chair Kale.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
I'll make one hard in comments, be good to your neighbors. I think we have one more thing on our agenda this evening. Last action item, consideration of request for zoning variance at the Rosen property on North L Street. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kale, uh, the item before you is a, the city received a request earlier this month related to a residence on North L Street. And I will turn it over to Planning Director Severson to have her walk you through the process.
Still, Tuesday. So this is the.
Yeah. So this is the Rosen setback variance request. Wait till, can't miss you on here.
Cheers.
Um, for isn't variance, uh, the address of the different stars and where it is. Um, see, facility wise, it's six ten North L Street. So, uh, yes, variance request, the zoning district it's in is R two M H, that's medium density mobile home. They are requesting a variance from the required front street setbacks. So the required setback from the street in the R two M H zoning district is twenty-five feet. Um, and I say street setbacks, sorry, it's from their property line. So their property line one, Lethal Street. They are requesting a variance from the twenty-five feet, seven feet, which will result in a setback of eighteen feet. So instead of installing the structure twenty-five feet back from their property line on L Street, it would be eighteen feet back. And so there is on the property, there is an existing mobile home. Uh, it does continue to go back one second. Existing mobile home, it does provide setbacks. Um, they are requesting this variance to put in an additional mobile home as kind of a secondary dwelling unit on the property. And the variance is needed, uh, so that they don't have to move the existing home foundation, all that, the time into the lines. Because of building permit fire separation requirements for the two structures. So, uh, I have attempted to visually show this, because I find this is a little more helpful. Um, on far left, um, you're looking at the property, that's the property line along L Street. So the in the red, the twenty-five foot required front setback, that red line, um, up and down is kind of showing you where, um, it would be required to put it. And then the eighteen feet is what they're requesting. Um, I've sort of overlaid this, you can't see the ADU, the front of the ADU, so the west side, um, actually, sorry, the south side. That north arrow would be touching that blue line. Um, and then the minimum district required between the structures, you can see I have a little arrow pointed at it, I only say it's like six feet four inches. Um, and then you see the existing mobile home back there. Um, so if you go to the next slide, don't believe, we have a lot of these variance requests. This is section thirty-seven four, the code, uh, the review criteria. Um, I will actually go through this quickly, um, what I have in my staff report for each of these. So is the variance contrary to public interest? It is a seventh that variance request, uh, does not, we do not anticipate it will prove to be contrary to the public interest. Public Works Director, uh, told me, I think I might have said in here that there are several structures in this area that encroached into the front setbacks, not moving the color unusual. Um, well, enforcement of required setback results in unnecessary hardship for the applicants. And that is without bringing the variance in order to comply with the building and fire code for the distance between the existing structure and the new ADU. They would need to move that existing structure, as I said, from its foundation and shift it back. Um, that would likely prove to be an expensive setting application for the applicant. Will the variance allow an unpermitted use? And this district, no, this allows residential uses, which is what the ADU was for. Will the variance grant special privilege to applicant within the district? Again, um, the existing structure complies with the setbacks. And this is, this is necessary to ensure that they they, um, meet that distance between the structures. And there are other structures in this neighborhood that encroach into the setbacks. I think that's pretty similar. I'm not sure I would say that's a special privilege since others have the same thing. Um, and finally, is the variance in harmony with the general purpose and intent of code? Staff does not anticipate that that granting the variance request would result in significant disharmony from the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. So based on what I just discussed, zoning administrator, that's me, finds the variance is aligned with the general purpose and to the code, and it would be appropriate for the commission to approve this variance request. The possible action the commission can take on this is approve the variance request. Uh, approve it with, um, specifying a beginning and or completion deadline for the ADU, since the ADU placement is what triggered the request for the variance. You may, uh, add a condition, uh, that says this is when it needs to begin, or this is when it needs to be completed and your building permit goes out. Um, or you may deny the variance request.
Yep. That's it. Commissioners, clarifying questions.
It's very weird we can't pull up on the map. We'll post exactly where it's at. Or go. Usually I try to drive by.
That's gonna zoom up a little closer. I just do it on a cool map thing.
Ask another question.
Yeah.
Uh, when was the original structure put in?
I don't know, but my understanding is it's been there a lot. And I look back at some areas, it's still. Um, but the applicant may be able to provide that exactly, or. The reason I didn't look into it is because the request, the variance isn't from that structure. So I didn't see that.
My interest for asking is, I have seen staging construction to to make yourself eligible for it there. Right? So you put in a, you put in a building. And then there's a requirement of six foot separation from your building to the other one, put in that one. And then you ask for variance.
Understood. Is this Google Earth? Because Google Earth, we can actually bring it back through, uh, probably twenty years in the aerial, and I'm pretty sure the structure was on the way.
Yeah, no, I, um, I just accessed this through the normal Google Maps. I didn't go into the Google Earth program that we.
Usually we'll give you an imagery date. This is twenty twenty-three. But I, and again, I may ask applicant, but, um, I believe it's been there quite a while.
Again, familiar theory, good knowledge. I thought it was almost at the end of all.
I don't suspect that's what's happening. It's just, I that I, when we make decisions on exceptions, I think about precedent, right? And so that's why I asked my question, because I don't want to set a precedent of, here's the way you get around, or is it required?
Sure. What I will say is it looks like this is a nineteen seventy-five mobile home. That makes me suspect that.
Uh, the, the application said that there was some kind of foundation.
Yes.
Connections. Yeah, if we're on wheels, we'd say just move it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm happy, if you want me to look, I can look over the Earth and trace back as far as I can to see.
No, this can happen to us.
Hi. Two bucks now. Come on. And we just tell us your name for the record.
You know, Rosen. Oh. And, uh, the, uh, oh. Yeah, we bought the property probably five or six years ago, and we knew the people who owned the property before us. And I know that that home has probably been there. Well, you could probably double check through Google, like you said. Uh, it's five and fifteen years. As far as I know.
That's good. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lyons, I'm gonna say still have the floor. Commissioner Schwartz?
I'm good.
Commissioner Friedman? I don't have any clarifying questions. I'm not sure where I'm at now. Um, so I would suggest that potentially to make a motion. Or do we want to hear from, does the applicant want to have any, you know, presence, I mean, do you want to say anything before we go to a motion? You don't have to. Jen did a great job, but if, but if you want to say anything, okay. So let's go ahead and if if someone would like to make a motion.
And I move to approve a seven foot variance request from, from quarter twenty-five foot front setback that allowed replacement of the structure on the property. Ten North L Street, no close in eighteen feet from the front property line. Allowed that section thirty-four, seven four, the code.
Okay, so I have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Lyons. So we'll go ahead and open it up to public comments. Um, so if anyone has public comments on this agenda item, feel free to come on up, uh, to the podium, uh, name and address and give us your comment. Right, I don't see anyone in the room. We'll go online. Anyone on the, online have a public comment? I don't see any public comment, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. See, Jen came back, so I'll ask if she had any additional, but okay with the commissioners.
Just, um, I just did a check on Google Earth, and I can see the existing mobile home, this form back is almost two thousand five.
So this would be, uh, discussion deliberation? Sure. Okay.
Um, so the nature reasons that setback is made. Consideration for zoning has to do with provision of light. So, um, you set a building back so that the shadow paths that doesn't respond to everyone else's, uh, existence in the street and a neighborhood property. When we're talking about some single story mobile home, that's not. So that, that, that's kind of, that's typically the emphasis for, for a setback is to, is to make sure we're not, you know, crowding in our community. With a mobile home, single story mobile home, that's not particularly salient. Um, and so that's, that's why we think about the setbacks and to me, it's not as salient in this instance. I feel relatively well convinced that there is, and and so then I'm gonna do one more planning lesson, which is why we do variance. Um, and why we would, uh, allow a variance would be because there's something specific to the property itself that that causes an undue hardship, um, to the property. That that undue hardship would be the necessity to move an existing structure that's already invested in infrastructure to that property. So I, I, I feel relatively convinced that there would be an undue hardship, particularly when you weigh that against the potential impact on the neighborhood being seven feet, seven feet encroachment on the setback of a, of a low profile property. Those are the things that I consider. I find this to be a, a very, it would have a very negative, negative impact on the neighborhood with any. And there is a reasonable undue hardship of having to move the existing structure. Furthermore, in consideration of the growth policy, this would be, be what I would consider a example of mental development, adding residential limits in town, um, in the urban developed area. So I, I don't see scum garden minutes against allowing the variance, and I feel impossible about it.
Commissioner Schwartz? Commissioner Friedman?
Oh, good.
Good, okay. I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Lyons. I feel like, you know, we talk of the talk about infill, and this gives us the opportunity to do that. You know, that's a large setback to begin with, and we still have a pretty good setback left over. I suppose there could be the prop, I don't, I don't know, but at some point maybe there would be sidewalks put in out there. I don't think there's sidewalks in that neighborhood now. Um, so I suppose there's always that potential, but it still seems like there's plenty of space to do that. Um, this is the way we want to grow, right? We want, we want to use the property that we have. Um, I don't see this as being an issue for the neighbors. Thank you for thinking creatively and, um, adding another home to our community. Um, and I'm glad that you can do it for your, I was like for your parents, so. That's, I mean, I think it's that, uh, and I would just say, you know, the only thing I saw in here that, just for all of us, as we have aging parents is that I, I think our, our fire chief was concerned about access if needed for emergencies. So just make sure. I mean, we should all think about that as we older, but that folks can get in and out. You can get help if needed, right? Like somebody can get in to help you if you need it. Uh, you look, you look fine right now, but I have to say we're, we are dealing with aging parents too. So, um, just something to keep in mind. That's all I have. Are we ready for a vote? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Vice Chair Kale.
For.
Commissioner Friedman.
Or.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Motion passes. Welcome to the community. We're glad to have you. Okay, so few little things here at the end, right? Um, city manager comments, Mr. Gager.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Kale. I, uh, appreciate everyone's help, um, helping us implement the budget at a staff level. I know that, uh, we're very excited about, about many of the changes, um, in there, including, um, the opportunity for some enhanced code enforcement and additional staff in the, the water department as well. So, uh, appreciate that. And then, um, and a planning intern, that's right. I think we've, we, we've witnessed tonight just, uh, how, how much work, uh, the director has in that specific department. So uh, all help is good help in that regard. And then I did want to follow up. Um, as you know, we had a, a special meeting scheduled for this past Friday, and, uh, we, we canceled that meeting based on the results of, uh, some inaction at the, the county level related to the wellness center project. And so please know that, uh, that the city's efforts to replace our aging recreation infrastructure continue. Had many conversations, uh, today and, uh, over the weekend, um, with the, the Four Ranges Foundation. And, um, we are continuing to evaluate the project and our opportunities. And I hope to, um, have more discussions with the, the city commission, uh, in the very near future about the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner comments, Commissioner Lyons?
Um, my only comment is to thank Vice Chair Kale for the efficient and well-rounded meeting today. Uh, it was, I was, uh, daunted when I, when I first looked at my packet. Um, I think we struck a nice balance of careful consideration and doing things done. And, uh, thank you for, for your attention, that, that, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Schwartz?
I'm not gonna steal your thunder by saying anything about the, the youth.
Okay.
Up in hell enough. Hopefully you will. I, I will make a comment on one, uh, this wedding happening downtown, I heard nothing about it. No complaints about it. Till somebody found out there was two men. Being married. Hopefully one of these days we'll get to the point where a wedding is a wedding. And, uh, not the gender and, uh, people's prejudices for that. With, um, also with that, um, there's rumor out there that it's costing seventy-three, four hundred dollars to, you know, do this, it's costing taxpayer money and, uh, no, it's not. On record by saying that. And it's unfortunate. You know, you might disagree with the venue and having it, but one person came up and, and published and stated that I didn't find that offensive. Now, yeah, find a way to, on a happy note. Very good job tonight. Manager. There were gone, anybody? Thank you, are you?
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Friedman?
Well. I want to thank the general audience for patience with us. And thanks for being here. I hope everything is everybody's satisfaction. Really is, but we're, we're trying to stretch the shoot for that. So thanks for being here. Thank you.
I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for an excellent meeting. I enjoy our conversations and our discussions and how we can get to agreement. So thank you for that. And then Commissioner Schwartz touched on it, but I, thank you. So there was a pretty, a pretty big case that happened, per case that happened in, in our state. And then the decision came down this week, just the other day, held the Montana. One of our young people here in Livingston was a plaintiff in that case. I had the pleasure of taking six of our high school students to view the first two days of, of that trial in May. And every time I think about what those young people did and what are, even our students from high school went to, to support those children, get some goosebumps. We should be very proud of the youth in our community. Of the landmark case and something that we've been struggling with, climate change. Has been brought to the forefront and hopefully we will continue to address it as it is. And so it was very exciting and it's, it's pretty exciting to think that the youth of Livingston helps to do that. So I'm pretty proud of our community this week. So with that, it's been a long evening. Thank you for the folks in, in the audience for all your thoughtful comments. And we will see you in two weeks. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
On favor?
Alright.
This Livingston City Commission meeting is adjourned at 9:24. Have a good night, everyone.